Good. I like that. Good evening, this is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, June 22, 2023. If everyone will rise for their pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're going to take attendance, Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Mr. Anthony Jacoby.
Present.
Jim Bonano's here, and Louis Campania.
Present.
And Mark Cunningham is not here. Uh, let's see.
Not quite a surprise.
Well, I'm so.
In case you're watching, Mark.
Mr. Nemisak, Board Member Nemisak, did you get to review any of the minutes?
I did, I provided just a short time ago my suggested revisions to the April 27, 2023 transcript of our Eastchester Planning Board hearing at that date, and I provided that to Lucas and Rob and the members of this board.
So, is that the one we could?
Yeah, that's the one we can vote on, that's the only one.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the Eastchester Planning Board meeting minutes of April 27, 2023.
Yes, subject to those revisions, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to run through the applications that we have in front of us today, so everyone knows what we're going to do. First one is Beach Street, second one is Bout Boxing, those are existing applications that we're going to continue, and they're continued public hearings. And then there's new applications, 23-13 Embassy Cleaners, 23-22 Westchester Meat Market, 23-23 Immaculate Conception and Assumption, 21-17-15 Tuckahoe Avenue Subdivision, and the last one is Lake Shore Drive. Great, so that's the order, nothing that we don't already know. So, the first application is 23-02-203 Beach Street Subdivision, all yours, Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you. For the record, Brian Dempsey, I'm a licensed professional engineer from the firm DTS, provided design engineering. Since the last hearing that we had, the town planner had asked us to do some additional counts, some additional measurements and such, which we did, and we've submitted to the town. I don't know if we can get the presentation. Um, so, just, and this is off of Google because we don't want to take too many pictures with people in the area. This is a situation that was brought up by the town planner, with cars parked on one side of the road, and if they're parked on both sides of the road, then this vehicle, as you can see, has, would have difficulty getting through, and if they're pedestrians or bicyclists, that's further impacts that issue there. So, what we were asked to do was form these different counts. So, we had a counting company perform the speed measurements and such, so that we have an unbiased opinion. The first set of counts, the tubes got ripped up, so they had to do another set. And so, what we found is, they were done in two spots, one by overlook on the top part of Beach, and then one west of Cywinoy, so on the bottom part. Speeds on the top part, with average speed was 24 miles per hour in both directions. The 85th percentile speed, which is the speed limit, you, speed you base speed limits on generally, was actually 28 miles per hour in each direction. On the bottom half, closer to Cywinoy, the average speed in both directions is 21, 22 miles per hour, and the 85th percentile speed was 24 to 25. So, that means 85% of the traffic was going 24 miles per hour or slower, 15% would have been going over. And the detailed charts in there say how many were going at what speed and such. So, those were the speed measurements that were done. The second set of counts that we were asked to look at were pedestrian bicyclists on the road, so we did those for a few hours on a sunny Saturday, plus on a weekday after school. On the weekday, we counted 19 pedestrians, and then there were three bicyclists. Those places came, they were in both directions, the three went one way, then they came back. On the Saturday, there were 13 pedestrians, no bicyclists, but there was one scooter with two kids riding on the scooter. Another time, on one of the earlier counts on the Saturday, we did see a family of three riding, riding the bicycles, again, they went in both directions when we were there. So, those were the pedestrian bicycle counts. The next thing we were, to look at is what improvements could, modifications could possibly be done here, on larges. Um, and.
Yeah, what would you like?
So, there's a few, and some of these were recommended by the town planner, or the town's traffic consultant, and they asked us to look into it based in some of our meetings. And the highway superintendent was also involved in some of these meetings. What we're recommending based upon those discussions was, at Ridge Street, to provide larger signage directing people on Highland to the Tuckahoe Schools to use Ridge Street. There is a small sign there, that's not that visible, and the recommendation was to increase the sign to get more people to use Ridge Street, because it's wider and it's a more direct route to the schools. Second one was add speed radar signs along Beach Street, and so we show them here, both on the northern, on the upper part, one per direction. Those are speeds that measure what your speeds are, it'll show the speed you're going, so the driver's aware of what they're going at, other people can also see what speed they're going at. And the newer ones now can record, so the town could collect that data of what the speeds are measured at consistently on the road. The next one is at the intersection of Beach and Rose, there's a couple recommendations there. One is to clear some of the vegetation, because when you're coming out of Rose looking to your right, there is vegetation that blocks your sight distance for vehicles coming up from Cywinoy. Second one was a suggestion to add stop signs at the intersection. We can either have two stop signs, so maintain the one on Rose, and have one on Beach coming, basically southbound to eastbound, so from Highland towards Cywinoy. And then possibly a third one in the opposite direction. The issue with the third one is because of the driveway locations and such, if we put a stop sign in, there's state laws, there's no parking within 30 feet of the stop sign, so you would lose one parking space up there. And the other recommendation that was discussed at the meeting, so what we have is to prohibit parking on the south side of Beach Street from Rose to Cywinoy, and we'll get, we'll get into that in a minute. All these are recommended with or without the project, they're basically based on existing conditions, the project really doesn't have much impact on any of those, but those are all recommended.
Rob, can I see this?
So, Hudson Engineering, the site engineers on the project, did the parking analysis along this stretch of Beach Street, looking at different scenarios. One is to have all parking on the north side based upon existing conditions, with that you get 19 parking spaces. The second scenario is if the, I'll go back to, if the vehicles are staggered on each, so they're on each side, because if they can't be parked right across from each other, nobody's getting through, if you stagger them, you get less parking spaces because of the way you have to leave the gaps in between. So, and then, the third part of this was to look at the onsite parking. You can get actually a total of 56 parking spaces onsite, not that 56 are going to be used, but just because each driveway can handle a minimum of four cars, some could handle six, you could add two cars in each garage, and there'll be six parking spaces along the east side of this, of the cul-de-sac. There'll be no parking within the cul-de-sac itself. So, what happens then is with that, and just counting the on-street parking, not counting any of this driveway parking, they actually take the existing number of 19 parking spaces, you would lose five because of the driveways that are added, and the area you need for that, and you can, we lose the five, but we'll add six spaces on-street that could be used by anybody on the, on the cul-de-sac, so any of the residents in the area can use them. So, we are actually increasing the number on-street parking spaces as a result of this. These, those were the traffic issues we were asked to take a look at, if there's any other comments.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one clarification point.
Sure.
On the remedial measures you had indicated in your memo with the mitigating measures, one of them involves trimming back of vegetation.
Yes.
My question is, I couldn't find a photo of this specific area, I would just want to make sure that the vegetation you're talking about is on the public right-of-way, as opposed to it's a homeowner's, you know, vegetation or trees, and how that, because it could relate to an enforcement issue that we need to know about.
Okay, I can get that to Lucas.
If you could.
I had a question about the, the traffic study, the independent traffic study that was apparently principally designed to, to measure speeds and non-vehicular traffic, pedestrians and bicycles and that.
No, we, we did the non-vehicular, because that equipment can't count that per se.
Yep.
The speeds were done through the tubes on the roads and such, and that was done by.
Okay, but the, the, and I just took a look at it now, I hadn't looked at the, at the, the charts before this, but it looks like these measurements were taken over a period of a number of consecutive days, that included, included weekend days, and included like, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of last week.
First of all, it's supposed to be two weeks, but as I said, the tubes got, so that's about a week.
Okay, so about a week, now, in terms of the, it looks like there's a fairly consistent tally during the week of motor vehicles, if I'm reading this correctly, of somewhere in the 550 to 600 range, 500 to 600 range, during the periods of, and this is, this is an all-day measurement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They show, yeah.
Yeah. So, and it's broken down by hour, right? Did, did anyone take the time to compare those measurements with certain of the measurements that you took that date back to March, and date back to some other periods of time, see if they're consistent?
Yeah, they're relatively consistent, some were higher, some were lower than, than the initial counts, but then some of the other counts we did were, were slightly different too.
Okay, because I know one of the issues that we, we heard about a couple of meetings ago was a questioning as to the, the accuracy of certain of the numbers that had been included, you know, nobody was suggesting that, that the numbers were fudged, but that they didn't, there was a suggestion that they, you know, we're people who live in the neighborhood, we know these numbers look low, and when we did a count, the numbers were higher. I just want to find out, and I think you've answered the question already, but is there anything in the data that you've assembled that's part of this report that, that changes in any way the, the numbers that you had previously presented as compared to the numbers that some of the neighbors?
No, that's not going to change the findings, as I said, you know, traffic fluctuates every day, so sometimes, you know, it goes a little up, sometimes it drops a little bit. But we made sure they were on good, good weather days, and, and, you know, we double-checked them with, with our numbers.
Okay, thanks.
Is it fair to characterize the speeds on the two different portions of Beach as the little bit higher on the portion near Highland, and the lower, they slow down a little bit?
It's slightly higher, the average speed is, is two, two miles per hour higher, the 85th percentile speed was, was four miles per hour higher, so on those, it is, it's slightly higher up top. It's still below the speed limit, and one of the things we were asked to look at is, this, part of this was traffic calming measures, speed humps and speed tables really wouldn't have too much effect on it because of the slower speeds they're already at. A speed hump could lower it slightly if you added a speed hump, but that brings some other issues in terms of on-street parking, the highway superintendent would have to look at it, and they do create some noise and such.
Right, just in general, if you were to change the speed limit, reduce the speed limit to maybe 25, something like on California Road, what would hap, what would you think would happen to the speeds? Would they reduce proportionally?
If you change the speed limit, I wouldn't say it reduces proportionally, because we've done various speed limit studies for changing it to 25 for various municipalities in Westchester. It may, it will drop it a little bit, but people drive at the speeds they're, they're comfortable at, so.
Yeah.
It may drop at one or two miles per hour, you would then, you would have some others, on the top part would be over the, the set speed limit there, on the bottom half, actually, you're still at 85%, is below 25 miles per hour.
Right, they're going slower already.
Yeah, in, in my experience, the, the tightness of the road is what dictates the speed, because people probably don't feel safe driving at above that speed, whatever the speed limit is. It's just like, if you're driving on the major degen, you're, and you're going 55 miles an hour, it, it feels like you're going, I, I'm only imagining what it would like to be going 75 miles an hour, but it feels like you're going 75.
And so, people drive at what they're feeling the road can.
Yeah, I, I think it's the road conditions that do that, and I don't, I don't know that it makes a large difference.
So, there were four measures you put forth, one is the sign, the Tuckahoe School sign, the one that's there right now is that little green sign, right?
It's a small sign that nobody sees.
What would the, what would be the nature of the sign that would put there, approximate size, you know, would it be big enough where people are actually going to see it, or I guess that's up to?
It would, it would be up to the town of how, you know, you don't want it, don't want it too big.
You don't want it signed, okay, cool.
But easier to read.
And the thought is that Ridge is much better equipped to handle that traffic, and that's why you have the sign in the first place?
Yeah, and this is brought up by the town planner as, as one of the.
But how do you get people to use it, they're so used to going down Beach right now? Once they see the sign, they will come, or?
It will, we could get some people to start to come, noticing, oh, that's a more practical route.
More direct route.
And for people not familiar with the school, it also helps in that regard.
Okay. As far as the stop signs at Rose, you're saying three, three stop signs probably aren't necessary, because the two will be enough?
You, you can have two or three, either situation works. The only issue with three, which is, was recommended by the town's traffic consultant, is because of the location of that one driveway, you would lose.
Oh, right, you use parking.
You'd lose one parking space up top there.
Yeah, right.
But actually around that curve, there's no parking permitted by code, but there's no signs that say that there.
Okay, so that's the stop signs, number four is the prohibiting parking, can you show us the 19 spots, if they go, are they on that?
By the way, if I could just interject on that, on that specific point, did you just say that the, if you added a stop sign, it would, because it would, you can't have parking within 30 feet of that stop sign, it would eliminate a space that is currently used as a parking space, but which technically shouldn't be used? Is that what you, I heard you say?
I'd have to check the house number, because, but in the town code, there it says there's no parking on that side going around the curve on, on Beach, opposite rows there. That's in the town code.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The, so the 19 spots you'd have if you were to only park on the north side, are they shown on that layout?
We're getting there.
Oh, okay, you're looking, thank you, I didn't mean to, just give us the thumbs up when you're ready.
Is, you want, this, well, this was the 20 spots in the future, this plan here. So, there, there's five spaces in this area right here.
One, two, five, yep.
Three, there'd be three more spaces right here, there's actually room for six parking spaces along, along this stretch of Beach, east of Cywinoy, and then there'd be six more spaces along the cul-de-sac stem there.
So, six, three, five, and six?
Twenty, right.
Is that right, six, five, three, and six?
Yeah, so that's the 20.
Twenty spots.
Okay. What, what are the, how many are on the street right now that they, that use?
The most we can squeeze in, looking at the different combinations of all on one side or staggered, was 19.
No, I mean currently, in whatever configuration the residents use, do they line the whole street with cars?
The most we could, if everyone lined up perfectly, would be 19 right now.
Oh, I see, in the existing conditions, right.
We've never seen close to that many.
And does that include the spot next to the stop sign that we were discussing?
That would include.
Or does not?
Yeah, they both, both calculations, yeah.
Got it, okay.
And that was why the stem from Beach does not have a stop sign, the short piece, because if they do put a stop sign in, then they would lose one to two parking spaces of that.
Okay.
So, I guess my question is, if we were to limit parking to the north side to the residents, would they lose the spots that they're used to using there? It sounds like the answer is no, right?
There are some spots that will be lost because of the driveway and, and the cul-de-sac, but the overall number of spaces would actually increase by one.
Because you're using the stops, using the spots on the cul-de-sac?
Right.
Yes.
Right, that's why it's increased. How far is the furthest one from the?
Well, if you could, oh.
Walking distance.
For me, that's a tough one, okay?
Sorry.
It's five spots, so it's 100 feet, yeah.
This is the first spot right here, so, I mean, to come across the street.
So, that's in 20 feet, plus cars at 20 feet, so it's 120 feet, so.
The furthest spot north on the map I measured is 150 feet, you'd have to walk to get to.
That would make sense, right, 50 from the street, and then 100.
That's the top spot.
Right, right, most you'd have to walk, yeah.
Right, five cars is 20, 100 feet, I guess, okay, cool. You mentioned something about staggered layout, like, it sounds kind of unorthodox, is something that you recommend?
No, that was what we were saying, we looked at that, you cannot fit as many cars when you stagger them on each side, as opposed to if you have them all on the one side.
Not that you'd propose that, that's just a.
No, yeah, we were, we were asked to look at that as.
Oh, you were, okay.
As another possibility, and that's not even considering the issues with the fire engine or anything like that, I was just trying to lay out.
Oh, and the spots that shouldn't be used for anything because of emergency vehicles or any part of this count, obviously, there just should be no parking at that portion of the street.
Well.
Right where you make the left off of Cywinoy.
Sorry.
Well, the, right, so there's some, the fire department came and said, oh my gosh, you can't park on the south side where you make the turn.
Right, so the fire department asked us to eliminate the spaces right here, in this area, right across the street from the cul-de-sac stem, because if a car is parked in this spot right here.
Oh, they can't, right.
For the, for the truck to get in, he needs this area to, to turn into, to make the turn into the, the stem of the cul-de-sac.
So, if you were to go with the layout you have for parking, you would control the spots by putting signage that clearly marks where you can and cannot park, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Saturday, pedestrians, bicycles. And when you say vehicles, that includes trucks, that includes delivery trucks?
Yes.
Got it. So, the comment you made about 19 pedestrians, that's in a particular day, the numbers you gave us?
That was from three to five, so a two-hour period, there were 19.
Oh, I see.
Had, some were people walking their dogs, some were, you know, going to their cars across the street, some were people just walking in the area.
Okay. Got it, I don't have any questions, do you guys have any other questions?
I think I've asked them all, no questions.
Cool. Mr. Greeley, we'd like to opine on this study, or just said, I'd feel much more comfortable if you tell us what you think about this.
Philip Greeley, Callio's Engineering and Design, we reviewed the information that Mr. Dempsey submitted. I think the questions that the board asked covered some of the items we had, we have, you know, our recommendations would be to make these mitigation measures part of the site plan approval, have the applicant, you know, install the signage in terms of the parking restrictions that would involve the town board to make that change. I think based on the information that was presented, you know, today, when you have people parking at either side, as presented last meeting, the fire trucks and emergency vehicles have some difficulty getting through there, so there is logic to this proposal, the additional spaces on the cul-de-sac, you know, in terms of the fact that the driveways and the garages in the individual units, you know, sometimes you'll have a dwelling unit that's built, and the driveway's so short you can't, and people will park on the street. These particular layouts do provide for adequate, as you indicated, four to six spaces, you know, off-street parking. So, the spaces on-street, yeah, they'll be used at times when there's gatherings or parties, so, but typical for any neighborhood, so I, I think the shifting of the parking to one side makes sense, that one space in question, I think the two versus the three stop signs can work. His comments about the other traffic calming measures, speed tables, because of these speeds, would not be effective, those are typically used when you have speeds excess of 35 miles an hour, and you want to bring them down into the range that these speeds are already. I, as you indicated, the people tend to drive the speeds that they feel comfortable with, some people drive a little faster, the speed advisory signs, the dynamic signs that they're identified, they do help, because sometimes people don't realize that they're going a little faster than they should. The possible reduction to 25 may have some slight effect if it's done in combination with these types of signs. If you didn't have the signs, people are still going to go the same speed, no matter what the speed limit is, unless it's enforced all the time. With these dynamic signs, people, if they see that it's posted at 25. With these dynamic signs, people, if they see that it's posted at twenty-five, they may bring it down a little bit, but not significantly. The speed humps will bring speeds even lower, but with the pedestrians and bicyclists, it, it becomes a little, they're typically used where you don't have any pedestrian or bicycle activities, you know, where it's just really motor vehicles, so. And I think those are really the, the key points. I think they've addressed everything else in terms of the data. And we did look at their counts compared to before. There's some variation, but nothing that changes the results of, you know, their analysis, so.
Okay, uh, thank you.
I have a question for you on the, when you, you said the two or three stop signs and the removal of the one space.
Yes.
Do you have a decided preference, one way or the other on that?
If it wasn't for parking, I prefer to have an always stop, three stop signs. The, I think the, in the, in the case here, the, the volumes are fairly similar, so there's support for that, because you don't want to use stop signs for a speed control. But looking at the volumes, it makes sense, and my typical preference is a three, an always stop, because then there's no indecision. But understanding the concern about losing additional parking, I think that the two would work fine, so.
Okay.
And I, and looking at, the, the plans had identified several areas where there were some site distance improvements, so the site plan had for their own access drives certain improvements. And what I saw in the, the field looks like the branches that they're talking about pruning, so it's not just pure clear cutting, would be within the right of way. And I think he can demonstrate, you know, on the final plan, so that it would not be affecting anybody's property per se.
How do the dynamic signs work? I mean, I know physically how they work, but they go up and stay there indefinitely, or once you feel they've done their purpose, they're removed?
Once they're in place, they should, should stay there. They're not a temporary, temporary signs.
They become part of the landscape.
And i- in terms of, I, I don't know whether what they've identified would be solar or whether they have to be direct power. There's both, both types. It really depends on the sun exposure, whether the solar would, would work. But they're both effective, and they, they've, the technology has improved significantly in terms of the life of these.
I guess I could ask Mr. Dempsey, but they're not very pretty. Do they make nice ones?
Well, the, the, the size of the signs could be kept appropriate for the neighborhood. There are varying sizes of these.
Yeah, okay, I'll leave it at that.
Again, you know, that, that's, the problem is, you, you look at signing, and you get to a point where you over-sign things. I think the concerns and the fact that we have the pedestrians there, I think this is an important consideration to, to do this, because, especially if it's someone from out of the area, a lot, a lot of the times you find in the neighborhood, the people that are speeding actually live in the neighborhood. I, I know in my neighborhood, that's what the studies found. We had speed tables installed, and I think it was like seventy-five percent of the people that were speeding were from the surrounding neighborhood. But I, I think, you know, considering the pedestrian activities, it's an appropriate measure.
I go back to Mr. Dempsey, but since I'll keep asking you questions, is part of the recommendations putting appropriate markings on the pavement also?
Yes.
So there's enough markings that, there's a big white line, you stop?
Where you have your stop signs, you would have a, a solid white stop bar. There were, at one of the meetings, there was also a comment about people not obeying the stop sign on Cywinoy at Beach. So I think there, you know, a stop sign ahead, current standard would be appropriate. There is a sign, but I think the, the current standard, so that would be one thing that we would add to that list that he's provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good up here?
Yeah, no questions.
Great. So this is an open public hearing, so, uh, open public hearing, so whoever would like to have comments, please come forward, state your name, address, and take it away.
Rose Bresch at 205 Beach Street. I've been here before, you have a long agenda, I'm going to be very brief. Couple of main concerns, as usual, water management. I love the optimism of engineers. We have a problem. What are we going to do with all this water? And they do their formulas, and their calculations, and their charts, and they come back and they say, here go, we solved it. And then reality hits, just like that storm we had at the end of April. And I, I know you've seen the pictures, because other residents have mailed them in. Highland Avenue completely inundated, and that's the system that this is supposed to be part of. That's what we're supposed to be putting our water into for some of these houses. So absolutely did not work. Second thing, the traffic study. I've been puzzling over the statement in the study that says, I'm going to quote, that the offset variance request, the key consideration for allowing the variance is there will be few left turns out of the proposed cul-de-sac, because Beach Street becomes a dead end. Now, in essence, that's the truth. However, that statement is misleading, because before you get to the dead end, you come to, to Cywinoy. So you have to make that right. So people are going to be making a left out of the cul-de-sac, and immediately, within a very short distance, making a right onto Cywinoy Boulevard. Now, if we're going to park nineteen cars over there, that's going to be a problem, even without the cars parked there. It's presented as if there's going to be few cars there, and the truth is, it's actually going to be more cars there, because you're going to be making the left, you're going to be making a right. You're not going down that dead end. There's only three houses down the dead end, people are turning around. I, I would say three or four times a week, the poor people that live at the end of that street, someone's in their driveway turning around because they think it's a street. Completely ignore that dead end sign. So I, I, I think that needs to be corrected in the report. Beach Street, yes, is a dead end, but before you get to the dead end, you get to Cywinoy. And that's where people are going to be making a turn, and that's where you're going to have the traffic. And yes, if you have another sign that says Tuckahoe Schools up on, on Highland, or maybe down on Rose, and maybe that's where people are going to be redirected, but we see it all the time, deliveries to the school, school buses, people going back and forth to the school, they're going, continue to use Beach Street and Cywinoy. They're not going to change over to Ridge Street, because that's what they're used to doing. I mean, the milk truck goes by twice a day, down to the school. I'm not even going to talk about the nineteen spots. I, I, that is not even, we just saw you can't, nineteen spots on the street. The, the street, the photo you just saw was someone parked and someone trying to get past. So how are we supposed to have cars parked there? People get out of the driveway, and then other people come in the other direction. It, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. Are there going to be more traffic studies in the future? Because there's black tape all over the street, where the, where the wires were, is that something that's going to come up in those two locations? So where the, where the wires were, the tape is still down in the street. I don't know if that's going to be reused, or that dissolves, I don't know, but it, it's, it's a mess. It should be cleaned up. And, and that's basically it. One last time, I'm not, we, we don't object to development of this property, it's a great piece of property. This is not the right design for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we continue with the next public statement, I did have a, a thought that maybe Dr. Greeley could address, or somebody else could address, and that is that even if you direct traffic towards Ridge, going to the Tuckahoe Schools, and you divert traffic that way, and it, the signage that you put is successful in doing that. The vehicles, school buses, parent cars, deliveries, whatever they are, and they take that route, they're not going to make a U-turn coming back. They are typically going to go through by the school and come back on Cywinoy towards this development. That's the natural route of egress, I believe. And I don't know if any of that signage is going to take that into consideration. You can divert cars coming in to go towards Ridge, but coming out, once they've gone to the school, or gone to wherever they're going, it seems to me that's the natural way out of the neighborhood. So there's still going to be that traffic pattern coming around, so I don't know if that was addressed or considered.
Well, I think the thought would be that if you're diverting the incoming traffic, you're doing something to, to mitigate the problem, because it's a problem now, and it will be a problem whether we approve this application or not. It will continue to be a problem. So anything you can do to, in, in this instance, lessen the incoming traffic towards the school is an improvement. That's the way I view it.
That's all I just wanted to.
Yeah. It's a good observation. Could you get them to not turn around and just keep going straight? That's just way out of control, to keep them not, make them just go past the, the high school and go on the streets over there?
Yeah, it's too circuitous.
Yeah, it really is. There's no, no way to get out of there.
Yeah, and I, I think, I don't, I know that this public comment, but with cars exiting the cul-de-sac, just, I guess to go along with the comment that was just made, it, it also seems quite circuitous for somebody to make the left out of the cul-de-sac to go to Highland or Route 22, or to California Road. Right? You think you would make a right out of the cul-de-sac, then to continue on Beach, and then go to Highland, or down Rose, or one of those other streets to, to hit those main, those main avenues. I guess also because the homes are, would then be located in East Chester School District, so there would be really no need for them to go in that direction on a daily basis. But I don't know if that was part of the study or not.
Yeah, it, it was, most will go right, but to be conservative, and this was based on our initial scoping and such.
Right.
We actually sent seventy percent of the cars coming out of the driveway, out of the cul-de-sac, to go left, to be conservative.
Got it.
Because of this, so we were overly conservative in that regard. But yes, most will go right, go Beach up to Highland, and then out to 22, or, you know, back through Hutch, or whichever. With the signage, as the board member said, we feel, and this originally came from the town planter, but we agreed with, any additional reduction would help in that regard. It will mainly help people going in. During the school hours, they're set on a certain pattern that the school sends out of how they're, they're supposed to go, and to drive around the school for pickup and drop-off. During other hours, though, you may have more people returning that way. You know, a lot of people just use ways now and such, too, so whatever that tells them.
Yeah. It's just to, to address one comment that came up about the dead end, is there something that could be done to prevent people from going into that dead end? Imagine more signs, more stripes, or something like that?
There was, we talked about additional signage, but they didn't, weren't too in favor of it. The other thing we talked about was.
Who's they?
Some of the, one of, one or two of the residents that spoke last night. You could add another do-not-enter sign on the other side of, of the, so you see it from both directions. And then the other thing we talked about is you can put paint cat tracks, which is basically the double yellow line going from there to the other one, so it shows you should be turning there.
How do those hold up, though, with the weather that we have in the wintertime with?
That would just be through paint, though, that wouldn't be.
Oh, paint, okay.
You know, just the cat tracks is, where you're turning the cat eyes, which is reflected. They can be done, too, but that, you have to be careful, they have to be well-installed. You can't have it like in Florida where they're all sticking out, they'd have to be flush with the pavement.
Got it.
Is it worth considering something over there, or it's sort of non, a non-issue?
You mean, in, in the dead end, you mean?
Yeah, is it worth addressing that and asking for that, or is it really, just as you said, it's really, really not an issue? At least not to the residents over there?
Right, I don't, I mean, it's, the paint could be put on that would go between the two stop bars on, on Cywinoy and Beach, and you could put that in.
Oh, okay, got it. All right, thank you. We're, I still have the public hearing open. Additional comments?
I'm going to start with, last point first, is that we've now opened the Brockville Manor Sign Shop. Sign on every corner, bigger one, new one, sign, sign, that's, you know, there's a song many years ago, my generation, sign, signs everywhere, sign. And what I noticed from my video captures is, these are the same cars every day, same times, you know, we're, we're creatures of habit. So these now people are unaware, it's a small number of streets, it's a very limited amount of area, they're making choices, conscious choices, it's not a misinformation or a lack of, of knowledge about what their options are, they're choosing the pattern they have. And these other measures are likely, if not inconsequential, closest to that. I apologize for what I was planning to speak on, I'll be a little more organized, but for the moment, I'm going to skip around a little bit, because it's in response to things said tonight. One of the things that doesn't seem to be an issue is speed. I think the pneumatic tube studies are just, they're saying that at the eighty-five percentile, which was regarded as the speed at which you kind of direct your attention, are below even what the, the lower threshold of twenty-five over on California Avenue. Therefore, putting additional visibility to speed and so forth doesn't seem to be the advantage. You guys don't have your name tags, and I, but the gentleman right here has made some very key points about you, you, you travel at the speed, you know these roads, you travel at the speed that you're, you're used to, and this, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a habit. But what's interesting is that overall speed is not an issue. The tubes that were placed of much, that are called position two, on the study that was supplied the raw data that was submitted on the twentieth of this month, they were positioned at 202 Beach, on the tree right next to my property, 200, and then extended over across almost exactly where the radius would be for the proposed cul-de-sac. It's interesting. The speed was set at the eighty-fifth percentile is twenty-one to twenty-two miles an hour. They have a three-car lengths to go. They've gone three-car lengths to that point, meaning they're already up to twenty-plus miles an hour. Not that they're going to go super fast at any point, but they're accelerating fast right by that development, right where the people will be turning left. If you look, if you work in the city, you're not going right to go to Highland, you're going left to get to Cross County. You want to go to, for example, you know, the Spray, I'm not going right, I'm going left, and go down Pond Field, so I can get down by Midland and all that, and get onto the, to the Spray exit. There's many reasons why I'm going left, not right, so Rose's point was absolutely correct The point about, we keep talking about parking on, on Beach, which is a whole other issue, and I'll, I'll only address something right now. I have great trouble getting out of my driveway. Generally consider a very good driver, and I have to do like a five-point turnaround maneuver to get out of my driveway, so many's parked behind me. It's one of these many spaces that are so available, they're talking. Most of my neighbors are courteous enough not to, because they can see, it's so tight. And now my driveway goes down on a grade, so I don't have, I could just, you know, drive on the grass a little bit, or I have some big extended area to move. I have limited distance to go out of the driveway, and if the car's there, I got to work. And thank God I have a backup camera, because it's real tight. And there's another guy next to me at 200, and 196, and then at 192, he's also got a grade, and he's got the same problem that I would have. So it, it, it sounds good, that, much more than is. In reality, right now, there's probably six good spaces. And, and, and if you take the cul-de-sac out, there's probably four. And that takes away anything that was on the other side, and the owners at 192 frequently park on the other side with their Jeep. park on the other side with their Jeep. Now, there was a comment by the traffic generation, traffic engineer, I better say it. Before I go there, let me go back to Cyanoine for a minute. There was a video provided by my neighbor at the corner, right off of the corner where Cyanoine Beach meet. And Christina from 138 Cyanoine, Marciano, you've got a video from her, she sat one afternoon at the corner, just a one-day sample, and you saw what was going on there. And it wasn't what the issue was going on at Beach, it was the issue was what was on Cyanoine, these cars parked on both sides, none of this has been addressed, on both sides, and there's people walking around the corner there, and there's cars making very difficult turns with other, you know, pedestrians and oncoming traffic, it's very treacherous. The other day, I was coming home and Rose, who's the other person who could really sit in, she came out before I could get there. There was kids sitting on the curb, I don't know if they were eating sandwiches or they were setting up a lemonade stand right next to that stop sign, but on the beach side, I mean, you're like, got a sign to hit me on me. She got to them before I did, so people are just not necessarily understanding the dynamic of which we're making much more complicated and dangerous. Now I'm going to go back to the point I was just starting to make. The comment, some higher, some lower, again, can I get your name? I don't want you calling...
Phil Nemec.
Phil, right. And you're an architect, right? You're an architect, right?
I'm a lawyer.
A lawyer, okay, Phil.
He's got the very best type.
Oh, yeah. I noticed, I gave you a chance to showcase it. Well, Phil, again, had another key question for the traffic engineers, how does this compare to what you've represented us and you've been continuing to say is proper to assess your comments and decisions upon, he says some higher, some lower. Where I come from, my industry, where we test and we use, you know, facts, we have like, a nice saying that we like to use, in God we trust, all others bring data. Well, how much higher, how much lower? And where does it matter and where does it doesn't? Where it doesn't? You'll recall in the traffic study, they focus on peak hour, peak AM, peak PM, and why would they do that? Because that's the greatest utilization of all. That's when everything's happening and, you know, like with any situation, you want to look at worst case as being like your critical task, and this is your worst case. Some higher, some lower doesn't apply to that. They're all higher, a lot higher. For example, in the PM hour on Thursdays, 46% higher than the highest PM hour that they were telling you about, that they did all these repeated studies for, and they really got it, got the number for you, it's definitely 50. Well, 73, well, that's an outlier, well, the day before was 69. I also have a 73 count on 68, just another day. What about the mornings, which I've been railing about? How are you taking samples in the, right in the week of Thanksgiving in the winter and calling that representative? It's just not. Well, on 68, which I provided a video for, which is very recently, we had 89 cars. 89 is a very different number than 64. And that's at the peak time. And then there was observations about, Mr. Herbert asked for, you know, some qualitative understanding of what the dynamics on the street, because you guys are all being alert to this is, this is a real situation here. Before we had the street, before we had another driveway in between the new street, the new driveway, and then the intersection too close, less than 150 feet before all that. And they were there for just two hours on a given Saturday, random time, and then another time undisclosed during the week. Well, if you watch kids going to schools at that 7:30 to 8:30 peak hour, they're climbing all over the road, and it's the highest utilization time. And it's 30, 40% higher than he claiming it. And, you know, how many pedestrians are at risk every day? High number. The observation...
34% higher based upon a study that...
Data I provided to you, plus they corroborated with their raw data, which I summarized for you. On the email of yesterday that I sent, I laid this aloud, I have a copy of it here, where I put, I took their raw data and I just tallied it up. And bear in mind, it would be higher, their raw data, because they have it at the whole hour, I misspelled it in my email, I apologize, I forgot the W. But the peak periods, I've measured so many times, I know now, peak period, 7:30 to 8:30, next peak period is 2:30 to 3:30. Those measurements that they're representing are on the whole hour, 7 to 8, 8 to 9. So we're not getting the actual peak. So these are undercounting, and still they're blowing their numbers out of the water, 46% higher in the afternoon as an example. So their data shows it, but I've been saying this all along, I've been showing videos I provided to the traffic consultant hired by the city, but it shows, you know, camera trips on every time a car goes by, you can see which direction they're going. 89 cars, 7:30 to 8:30, last two weeks ago. And I get accounts of 80 all the time, always over 70, it's not 64. So, and I provided that to the city, I provided that to the planning board, it's available, there's a link there right next to, in that email, but don't listen to me, look at their own data, their own data is telling you. That's all I'm going to do in response to what was presented. Now, I'm going to want to show some visuals, and I would like to ideally talk about it, so maybe just...
Yeah, you have to take the microphone so the record can hear you, if you want to use the easel.
Yeah, that's, I'm just making sure that's okay. And show the... I'm on camera, everything else, and then...
Do you have a real problem?
With what?
Um, I have it on my email, so I can, yeah, have it on.
See if he's got a copy.
Yeah.
What I've put before you is the representation we've seen numbers of times, a lot of times in response to things that I've said, I think it's Hudson Engineers or, I don't remember exactly their name, he's not here today. But this graphic, the fuzzy one, was taken from a screen capture that I think we've all been seeing, where they say, look, it's typical, all those cul-de-sacs, that's the way we do it here in Eastchester, that's what he's been saying. I pointed out at some point via an email graphic, you know, that's not the case, but I don't think it really makes the point the way I'm going to now. So this is the area he's showing us, this is Eastchester per se. And the red dots that you see, or the red pins, represent anything with more than one home that's not a multifamily in a cul-de-sac, even if it's not a cul-de-sac, if it's a dead end with like two or three houses. So I'm giving the benefit of the doubt that this is a cul-de-sac for things that really aren't a cul-de-sac, but you can see the alignment is very similar to what he has here, the two, the two. I'm giving three, he says, to, the five in here, the two tight ones there. Now I'm going to subtract a couple ones with your permission, because this is right off of, these two here are right off of 119, it's basically traffic control, they basically put it, you know, some walkway in between it and a little dirt so that you don't use the, you know, people cutting through. So this is really not a cul-de-sac, this is a traffic mitigation measure, so it really isn't fair, I'm going to pull that one out. So here we are with the, oops, that was the wrong one. Actually is the Tuckahoe one, and that does belong. What I was trying to pull off was this one here off of 119. So that's now a cleaned up model, tracking exactly with what he's showing you. Now, I put my hand over this area right at Tuckahoe Road and what would be Beach Street, how many do we really see? And how many of them have four in a row or five in a row that he's calling typical? None, zero, right? If I put my hand over here, how many do we see that has four in a row or five in a row? None. One of them happens to be the new development. I take that off, that's not there yet. Now how many of these do we see if I put my hand over the Tuckahoe? Zero, three in a group here and there. All we have is this one right here. And it's the outlier. But if you take a satellite view, if you drive there, it's very green. It's not what we have here or what's going to be here. It just happens to be some big parcels, you're going to talk about one tonight, Tuckahoe, 15 Tuckahoe. These were over a long, big wide stretch, so these things like acre in between. So even if you build them up heavy, there's still a lot of green space left. Not the case of what we're having here. So the point that I'm trying to make is, this is an outlier. What they're proposing here is not typical of the area, certainly not typical of Bronxville Manor, because in Bronxville Manor, I'll make sure I identify it correctly, this is the one, the one, that's in Bronxville Manor. Here I have the immediate adjoining area, hopefully artistically presented, but more importantly, presented so you can get your bearings of where you are. Of, this is the corner that's 202 Beach, this is the corner of Cyanoine, taken from this, across the corner. This is looking down that dead end street that we were just talking about. And this is now at 196 Beach, looking down, there's the parked car that gets sideswiped all the time, which is almost exactly, the back of this car would be the cul-de-sac exit. This is what it looks like. Nice neighborhood, anybody would want to move there. Not a lot of signs, notice that, not a lot of signs. One of the attributes, it's not the Bronx. Not saying they want the Bronx, but it's different. It's a different character, different neighborhood. That's what we have currently. This is more or less what we're talking about coming. Where's this, what I'm showing you is Dambrosia. Dambrosia is a very similar concept of development to what's being proposed here. This is 1, 2, 3, this might be the same house, it's just huge, 1, 2, 3, it's either three or four I'm looking at there, in that one little screenshot. And this is two houses, the roof lines merging. This is a very different character of neighborhood, dramatically different. There's nowhere we have a succession of 3,500 square foot homes, not four of them, not This is a 100-year storm? No. Is a 50-year storm? No. It's two inches over 24 hours. Two inches, 2.14 to be exact. 100-year storm is 9.17 inches over 24 hours. This was four inches of rain over 48 hours. That's water running in a river out of Dambrosia with all the 100-year systems that are so infallible. That's water flying out in a river. This is, these are the best representations, because it's taken from video, which you were provided by 138 Cyanoine, Christina Marciano mentioned earlier. But the point being is that what people keep talking about, that this is a very different area, this is current state of the art. I sent a video in about this, and I showed you my system, which is 50-year storm rated, saturated, this is like probably at least one every other month saturation, a 50-year storm? We don't, it's completely inappropriate. I showed you my neighbor, 192 the Mancusos, drying out their basement on the patio, on the driveway. They house have a brand new, actually two brand new dry wells, also 50-year rated, I assume, because they won't get approved these days if it wasn't at least that. I showed you in the video the pool that's still in there the next day. So if this is 50 years, 100 years that much better? And it's going to handle all this water in this area? No, it's just coming down, that's why that road was shut down that day. We're covering more and more surfaces with systems that cannot handle the level of water that's already there, plus what's coming from the sky. I'll read from two items that came in today to your facilities about the 15 Tuckahoe development, and I'm just going to highlight them for the fact that they're right on point. One is from a woman named Gail Stewart, she may be here. She wrote you this afternoon at 5:17, she said, and she lives at 23 Tuckahoe Avenue. Water has always been a problem on our property, by the way, she's lived there with her family since 1926, so they're not new here, they kind of know what's going on. Water has always been a problem on our property, this is very high water table here, dig down four feet and you hit water. And it's also clay, by the way, I mean, this is not soil that drains. She continues on later, it's still very wet back there, and puddles when it rains, I have a sump pump basement that runs 24/7. Another one that came in today was actually a repost of, from Maria, I'm going to say it's Annabine, I'm trying, because I'm Sloveno, I try harder, but it's, I think that's how it goes, and it was to Margaret Yule before in 2021. And she's, when we were last looking at 15 Tuckahoe, and she's just had that forwarded back, and she writes, there are serious infrastructure issues that plague the neighborhood as a whole and significantly on Tuckahoe Avenue. To name a few, these include the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, the main water lines, the high water table, and through traffic. These issues have not been meaningfully addressed by the town. In the meantime, stress on these infrastructure systems has continued to increase over the years. So I'm going to leave it there. I mean, if this is truly a deliberative body that cares about what's going to happen longer term, I don't know how you can approve this project. I mean, that's my, you know, you're probably going to close up the meeting for public discourse, you're probably going to make a decision, I fear you're going to make the wrong one, but, I mean, that's how I'm going to leave it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to leave you these graphics?
No, you can, you can take them back, thank you. So the public hearing is still open, no more comments on 203 Beach? Okay. Gentlemen, do we have any comments?
Nope. The only thing I, did we, did Mr. Tramelli or anyone else have any further discussions on potential...
Water management?
Water, yeah, water management issues?
We resolved that, according to Mr. Tramelli, wrote a memo saying that the issues had been worked out.
Okay, yeah, I must have missed that memo.
Are we talking about the INI?
No, not the INI, that's a sanitary sewer issue, yeah, that has not been worked out, yeah, no. The, but the, the standards are the standards.
Right, right, okay.
Also, there's one other thing I just wanted to make clear for those watching at home. Somebody tonight mentioned the word parking variance, and I just want to be clear that this board does not address parking variances or issue variances. That is a zoning board issue. To the ex... To the extent that any are needed, and if there's a rearrangement of parking spaces or signage, that is an issue for the town board, not this particular body. That's all I want to clarify.
Oh, there was something I wanted to just bring up or note. As far as the nineteen spaces and Mr. Slovenco's comment about backing up in the cars there. Is that something that we could address at a later time? It seems like we're taking all the spots, but if they make life difficult for those folks that have to get out of their driveways. I mean, that doesn't have to be addressed right now, it has to be addressed.
Well, I mean, you would have to, you would have to measure the space and see if there was adequate space. You know, depending on where cars park relative to the driveways.
The driveways, and that's something.
Right, right, I mean.
Does your study address people coming out of their driveways? When we do those nineteen spaces?
With the nineteen spaces, what we're showing is just what the maximum number of spaces that could be there. If someone is directly opposite a driveway, then the person would have to turn earlier. And to make the turn to back out. But it, that's, it's an existing condition, we're not adding any odd street traffic, odd street parking in the area from the project. So we wouldn't be affecting that. It's an existing condition.
I don't want to, but I have to agree with you. Yeah, I mean, you're kind of right. It's an existing condition that's there now, you're not changing it.
It is, but if part of the project is going to involve at some point in time directing that all of the track, all of the parking be on one side of the street versus not on both sides of the street. Then to the extent that people are coming out of their driveways on one side of the street, there's going to be more parking across from those driveways.
But as it exists right now.
I don't know if there's any way around it, but.
Yeah, but there's parking on both sides right now, so in theory it could be even worse. Because you could have the two people parked on either side of your driveway and someone parked right behind you. That won't be a problem going forward if you eliminate the parking on one side of the street. But, you know.
And on that note, the rest of Beach Street is parking, I just, on one side of the street from Highland to Rose and then after Siwanoy.
Yeah.
You mean between Rose and Highland?
Yeah, between Highland and Rose is parking on one side. And our recommendation for it is more a safety issue. It was demonstrated with the fire engine, that if you have parking on both sides of the street, I think you start having serious issues if the fire engine just can't get through.
Thank you.
But that, again, that's an existing condition. It has no relevance to this project.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Are we doing that? No, not going, oh, back there. Come on. I heard, I heard that, yes, thank you.
Thank you, I'm Christina Marciano, I live at one thirty-eight Siwanoy. I just want to bring to your attention one more time. That I did witness, and I actually have it on my Ring camera, that the existing conditions, there was a situation where there were two school buses. One was coming off of Siwanoy, making a left from Siwanoy to Beach. And one was making a right from Beach to Siwanoy. At the same time, one had to back up because the other one couldn't get through with the existing conditions. And at that time, there was only one car parked outside of Rose's house. Two oh three, two oh, two oh five, sorry, excuse me. That's with one car, so that wasn't even when there were supposedly going to be that many cars parked as they're requesting. And also, when, if the cul-de-sac gets put in, when they're, where the cars are going to be parked on that side, and if you do not have any parking on the existing side that's allowed on Beach. With the cars coming from Beach to Siwanoy. And if you're making a right-hand turn out of the cul-de-sac, there's no room for two cars. You cannot, if there's a car parked where they want it to be allowed to park, where that corner is, they'd have to come into oncoming traffic without being able to see regardless of whether you cut any brush there. Because the car is going to be parked there, and there's a potential for landscape trucks to be parked there, for delivery trucks to be parked there. Amazon cars always double park. There is going to be head-on collision there. Guaranteed. I mean, I hope it never happens, but I guarantee it. So I just urge you to take another look at that situation. If you could, can we pull up the diagram one more time?
I think that would help, yes. Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. I think I do, but it's better to point to it.
I just think this is extremely, extremely important because I really, if you have someone coming down, invite someone.
If you could just take the microphone. No, it's okay, we want to get everything you're saying on the record.
Well, why don't you stand by until he's got that up and then you can make your comments? Uh, over there, use his mouse, please.
Can you show the driveway, like the overlay? Can you show the driveway, like the overlay?
Switched plan.
Right, that's good. That's good enough, we can see everything.
Thank you, okay, so where Rose meets Beach, meets Beach Street, it's much higher elevation than it is at the bottom of Siwanoy and Beach. So if they're making a right-hand turn out of that cul-de-sac, you have cars coming around the car, even if you put a stop sign. They're going to be coming down the hill, and there is going to be zero visibility when you have a car parked there. Because the majority of the cars are not sedans, they are SUVs, they are delivery trucks, they are landscaping trucks. And I will tell you that in that, that corner there at, at, Beach Street, where it goes around to the right towards Highland, there are constantly cars parked on that corner illegally.
Just for purposes of the record, to clarify it. So what you're saying is a car coming out of the cul-de-sac driveway cannot see, or would have limited visibility looking up towards Rose?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's on the record.
Right, right.
Because of the height too of the street?
Because of the height and because no one is going to abide by that corner. By, they park there all the time. So, but even as this is, say everybody parks legally. The visibility is going to be nonexistent.
Due to all of the cars along there, or just that one car right at the corner of where you make the right?
Well, there is no room, the visibility is because of, I would say because of all of the cars. Because right now, as it is, when you go up the street, when cars are parked over there, you have to go into oncoming traffic as it is.
Yeah, that's the nature of the street.
And I know that there have been people that are in this room that have had issues with delivery trucks and having very close calls with situations that are existing as it is. So the fact that I witnessed even the two school buses with one car parked outside of Rose's house, not being able to make the turn as it is, it's just, I just would like for you please to consider what the request is here and the danger that this is going to put. Not even just the people that are in their cars, but the children that are walking, the strollers, the bicyclists, the pedestrians. I just think it's a recipe for disaster, and I really hope that it can be avoided at some, some way. Because the, and the additional signage too, it just, it just doesn't fit with the neighborhood. I mean, and I understand some, but what's being proposed is excessive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any more comments? I saw a few hands. No, we're good, okay. Is there any way to, at some point, just, I mean, there's lots of comments about the traffic patterns and everything, but, and we have some suggestions here, but is there any way to study the traffic a little bit more and make more recommendations to sort of address the issues such that were brought up now? Safety, pedestrian safety, these conditions that are just unnatural and, or is that just?
I mean, I think it's just part of the problem, I mean, unfortunately, you all live on a street that's just generally not safe.
Don't think you should say that.
It is what it is, I mean, it's a narrow street, I mean, you know.
Right, it is existing, although I sympathize.
I mean, there's a lot of, everyone just keeps pointing at that, and you know.
We're trying to met the best of what is there.
Put on paper everything that we come up with.
Right, we can change the conditions that are there.
So, right, so it's like, we tried our best to,
Yeah, to work with.
Look at every possible angle. If people don't like the angle that we came up with, well, we don't have to do that, but, I mean, there's only so many solutions.
Right, we've addressed as much as we could.
I guess, you know, look, it's a less than ideal traffic situation now. And it becomes a little more complicated when you're adding this cul-de-sac, you know, where it's at. And, you know, personally, you know, I depend a lot on Phil Greeley's input because you're the neutral in this, and you're the consultant that is here to advise this board on the town's behalf. I understand, and I think we had a back and forth a couple of meetings ago where I kept asking, you know, is there anything that can be done with this situation, with this development that could possibly make the traffic situation, even if it's only a tiny bit, better than it is right now? And I, I know we kind of struggled with it, I reread the transcript. I think the conclusion was, no, nothing, there's nothing that can be done to make it better. At best, you can, you can add some, some measures, you could take some measures that might make it less worse. But anytime you add a new street, you know, as we'd be doing here, and you're adding additional traffic, even if it's only an incremental amount of traffic, I think that combination on what's already a difficult street is not going to help. And so I guess, you know, my question to you is, you know, how much worse is this if, you know, if we take the appropriate measures? I mean, is it just a teensy tiny bit worse? Or is it significantly worse? Because significantly worse isn't going to cut it.
First of all, I think the applicant is proposing measures to try to offset, and I think, speed control and organizing parking offset traffic increases in terms of, it's addressing the existing conditions. The concerns about the site distances exiting, they have to provide minimum site distances. The, the issue turning from Beach onto Siwanoy, two buses at the same time, under their plan, there are some spaces that are being eliminated.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I think you understand it, right?
Because you're putting a new home right there, and you can't park in front of the home.
And that was the requirement of the fire department for the proper swing, so that should actually improve that scenario that was talked about.
That, that particular scenario, yes, I agree.
I think anything that helps reduce speeds, even if it's only one or two miles per hour. You know, we're talking about speeds in the twenties, but if you're walking, twenty miles an hour seems fast, okay? It's relative, so if we can, by doing the speed sign, signing, bring that down even by one or two miles per hour, that's a betterment, okay? I think the stop sign controls and the site distances, improving the sight lines. You know, those are things that, you know, could be done even without this project, but I think the applicant identified them. And if they're willing to make those, then there's no additional, you know, quote, cost to the town. So, and from a traffic generation standpoint, I think they've addressed that. They were conservative on their numbers. So in terms of offsetting any increase in traffic, I think this, you know, helps the situation somewhat. It doesn't solve the situation. You know, pedestrians, the way to solve situations like this is put sidewalks in, but that's not going to happen here. The parking on one side of the street as presented, the other section of Beach already has that limitation. There's other roads in the town, there's other streets that have that same situation. Backing out of driveways, that occurs even without these changes, okay? I think by organizing it, it does make it a little better because you're not dealing with cars on either side of the street, so you have some better visibility, you have a little bit more room to move on your side of the street. So at the end of the day, you know, how much worse is it going to be? I think the recommendations will offset the increases we're talking about. And it's to address existing conditions.
Okay, yeah, for example, the, you know, putting all of the parking on one side. I never like driving on a tight road where you have to kind of slalom. Because, and talk about increasing the likelihood of a pedestrian incident when you have cars that are weaving in and out simply because they're trying to avoid other cars. You know, you have somebody stepping out from behind a car, that's a less than ideal situation. I think we can all agree. So, yeah, I do understand that there are, that, you know, these are well-conceived measures to try to alleviate the, the impact of, and as I view it, the, you know, you have a less than ideal situation, and the two things that you're adding, you're adding another street. And needless to say, that street requires, that would require a variance, which this board isn't going to address.
Right.
And the other thing you have is just naturally by having, you know, an additional six homes in that area, you are increasing traffic. So, you know, that, that comes with the territory. If you, if you grant the application, you're going to have that, that new street coming out, and you're going to have some small increase in the traffic flow. And the efforts that have been made to try to offset the impact of that seem to be well-conceived by your judgment. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Greeley, I have one question. There are several streets in town which are narrow, like Beach Street, have parking on one side, like we're proposing here. But they're one ways, so this is a two-way street. If these two cars are coming, or two cars are coming head-on, is there enough room, in your opinion, that they can get by each other? in your opinion, that they can get by each other, or...
It, it's, it's going to be this, a similar situation to what exists today. They're, they're currently functioning as two-way roadways. And if you look at the, the other portion of Beach Street, which is, you know, between Rose and Highland, that's the way it functions. You know, it's courtesy of the road to a certain extent. And all that this would do would extend that pattern to the section between Rose and Cyrenoid.
Yeah, I feel like when they're on two sides of the street, though, you have more little places to duck in and wait. Now, all the cars on one side, what happens if they're all packed? Someone's going to have to back up now.
It's similar to what occurs on the other section, I, you know. And, and in, in some respects, that, you know, can also calm the traffic down further, but, you know, at the end of the day, and, and the volumes that were documented and the future volumes, they're of, still of the same magnitude of what we refer to as a local street, okay? We're not, if we were talking about, you know, double the volumes, you know, that may be a, a little different to look at, whether or not one-way patterns would be appropriate. So...
Well, just to follow up on that, it's a twenty-two-foot wide street or a twenty?
It, it varies between twenty to twenty-two feet. There, you know, some sections that are tight, yeah. As you get to Rose around the curve, the road opens up a little bit just because of the...
Oh, but it, worst case is twenty. So is that, what's a car worth? Eight or six?
Yeah, so with parking, you would take, the on-street parking space, you would typically have seven to up to eight feet is what you would allow for that, okay? So, you, you're remaining about fourteen feet, fifteen feet...
For two cars.
If someone isn't parked, you know, properly there.
But, as we said, it's a condition that exists, so we're not really changing anything. Okay. So my next question, maybe it's more for you, procedurally, the recommendations that have been brought up, that Mr. Dempsey brought up, and the stop signs and everything, who implements them, or, I'm not here, I'm sorry. Who implements them? Who's responsible? Because some of them require approval by the town board. How, if we were to pursue them, who goes to the town board and what's the next step to have them implemented?
Well, I mean, as part of your decision, you can, um, you know, make a recommendation to the town board to, um, make these changes, with the stop signs and with the parking regulations. But then they would have to act on their own, I mean...
Right. So that's the next step. But the applicant would go to the town board, or we would just...
The applicant would petition the town board for those changes.
And we would send our recommendations to the town board to...
Correct, right, right. But that would come at the end if the subdivision were to be approved. I mean, they still have to get the variances, and they still have to come back before your board.
Okay. But they won't die on the vine. Sooner or later, they'll become part of the application and, and make their way through.
Right.
Got it. Okay.
And typically, they would be implemented at the cost to the applicant to do them. If, you know, the town board makes that determination. They may make a determination. These should be done regardless, but you, you could work that into your resolution.
Right. I understand. Okay. Thank you. Any more comments, guys?
Question.
Oh, please.
Richard Solanco, 200 Beach. In the, uh, Mr., in Collier's, uh, Dr. Greeley's, uh, comments, several times it says, it won't make it worse than it is now. And actually, I think that's not the case. Because, for example, if we take the few cars that are on the other side of the road that are typically very, very wide, a part of the road at the intersection area of Rose, and we push them down onto Beach, now we're guaranteeing they're going to be behind my car, and they're going to be the sightline distance issued as people are trying to take a right out of the new, uh, cul-de-sac. They don't do that now because they don't need to. We're not fo, so short on space. That's number one. Number two is, the focus about, not to Phil's, the lawyer, point about, uh, making, you know, things worse as, as, as far as traffic was addressed, and, and yes, there's not a lot of cars, there can be a lot of bicycles, a lot of people on scooters, things like that, which is really, in this area, the, the bigger concern from my point of view. But more importantly is that we're adding a, I mean, I don't have a graphic in front of you, but you have the corner, you have the current 205 basically looking right down the street of Cyrenoid. You would add a new driveway, a new cul-de-sac, all within three-car lengths of what we're all talking about as one crazy intersection. And no parking restriction changes on the area where we show all those dangerous videos. So the real danger and change that's happening, we're adding significant danger, I'm trying to emphasize, is the new source of traffic and people in the most compressed area. And we already know that from the data we received yesterday, or the day before yesterday, is they're accelerating very fast there. They're going to be at twenty-one miles an hour at that point of where that cul-de-sac is. They're already at speed. Your, your stop sign, I mean, your, your speed signs aren't going to do anything for that. That's just the behavior of people. And those are where the people are going to be either going left to the city or Bronxville, or they're coming right, and they got a parked car for sure they're blocking my ability to get on my driveway, which I don't have now, so it's making it worse. And people's ability to see down the street, which they don't have now. So it's making a, a bad situation a lot worse, a lot worse. And I think Christina wants to point out is that there might have been a misunderstanding about the situation, she's talking about the school buses. It's not going to be mitigated by not having potential car on the south side of the street. That wasn't an issue with what the, the situation she was describing. That was maybe misunderstood. So I, I would emphatically disagree with that the situations are, are now not being made worse by what's going on. The movement of the cars and the added, uh, source of complexity in a, in a, an area where these kids, sometimes young, sometimes stupid, sometimes, you know, youth, not paying attention. Oh, Rose, they could get hurt. They're not paying attention. All these different things, now, it's just like a video game. Everything's coming at you at once in that very tight area. This is crazy. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, I got to ask you one more question, Mr. Greeley. Do you mind going back up? Does, and I think I know what your opinion is, but I got to ask it. Does making the parking on the north side of the street make the situation any better by organizing it, or as suggested, it might actually exacerbate it, make it worse?
Two points. Number one, it definitely makes it better for emergency vehicle access, number one, by consolidating it. The positioning of it relative to driveways, I think the plan that Mr. Dempsey showed accommodates that in terms of the sightline exiting from the cul-de-sac, uh, that one vehicle that they're talking about. With it all consolidated on one side, the vehicles traveling, uh, towards Cyrenoid will be further away from that edge. And they will have to, if someone's parked there, move forward to see before they exit. The speeds we're talking about, we have accommodated the sightlines based on his plan. So I think the, if, if we were talking about higher speeds in the thirties, then we would have to recommend removing that space. With the speeds we're talking about, um, that area, and again, the, the speeds refer to both directions. So the vehicles, uh, you know, go, coming away from Cyrenoid at that point would be a little bit less.
Okay. I, I do have a question, because I, I'll play devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
Just as I think it's an advantage to remove that slalom-like parking on both sides, if you do so and have parking only on one side, would that have a tendency to increase the speeds? Because you no longer have to slow down naturally, yeah?
The, the width of the road will still limit that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that would be my experience as well.
If you have a, if we were talking about a thirty-five-foot wide road and you put parking only on one side, then yes, it would probably change that. But with the width of the road is the determining factor here.
So, I'm going to take comfort in the fact that you just said, everything has been looked at, all of the sightlines and emergency vehicles and the circulation and the safety and all that has been looked at by the, by the applicant. You've looked at it, you reviewed it, and you said, everything that's been brought up by the public and their concerns have been addressed in their application.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So then, it comes down to what do we do next? So, we've spent a long time on this, and we certainly done, we on the board have done our due diligence and listened to comments from the public. We've listened to our consultants, we've re-listened to comments from the public and our consultants, and we've gone back and forth. We understand what the issues are, and, um, it's a difficult, it's a difficult neighborhood. It really is. It's in, from the very beginning, I think we've all said, it's existing conditions we're just poor to start with. And I think maybe the very first meeting that we came to, we all asked Mr. Greeley and everyone else, is what's being done here make it any worse? And I think you brought up again tonight, Phil, you've said to Mr. Greeley, is there anything you could do to sort of make it a little bit better than what is there now to offset any increases due to the development? I think, I don't know if, maybe you said a little bit better, but I remember you asked that, and, and we sort of agree with Mr. Greeley that, yeah, and I think you might have said it just now, it helps make things a little bit less worse, a little bit less worse, right? So, I mean, I think we've done everything we can based on the conditions. All of the other issues that are brought up about water, um, similarly, I would think that I'd ask Mr. Tremelli about the same questions, that is this the best we could do here? And I understand there's lots of water there, um, but we have to leave it up to our, to their consultant, our, and our consultant at town, that what's being done will work. I know the pictures stink and everything, but I can't, I can't, um, I can't make conclusions that it won't, that what is being presented isn't going to work. It's being presented as something that's going to work. Our consultant reviews it, they give the thumbs up, and we act on that. We all have our own opinions, we all have lots of opinions in this room, and I have mine, and I wish there was a way I could change everything, but we're, as I've said repeatedly, we're faced with the documents that are put in front of us. And right now, the documents that have been put in front of us, that are on the record and all the comments have been made, points in the direction that the impact on the, on the neighborhood is, is not such that we should say it, um, it can't move forward.
If I, if I can add, uh, first of all, I think, uh, the chairman stated something that s- suggested that the neighborhood was sort of less than ideal. Well, um, I, I, I think he only meant that, that, for example, the traffic and i- is a less than ideal traffic situation. Certainly, if, if, if the measure of the neighborhood is the, uh, the fervor with which its residents, uh, come forward and, and, and bring up all of these terrific points for, for this board to consider, well, uh, obviously, this is a great neighborhood. I, I, I do know that, for, for example, what, uh, what Mr. Tremelli stated, and I, I listened very carefully in our, at the April meeting, um, I, I know we had the terrible water event just about a week or so after that meeting, that maybe it was the weekend of that meeting, and, and certainly made for some dramatic footage, uh, and, you know, it, it, it wasn't even a hundred-year event. There, there is, you know, global warming being what it is, we're probably all faced with these types of events, no matter what we do at this point. But, but Mr. Tremelli was, was pretty adamant, and I remember we, we definitely questioned him, that the, uh, water, um, management on this site is going to result, you know, in a, a net improvement of, of the water conditions at, at this location from how they presently exist. I, I, I understand your skepticism. I, I, those photos today from D'Ambrosio are, are real. You know, I, I, that was a, a, a pretty bad storm. Everything came sort of at once, but I think it was only about five and a half inches we got over thirty-six or forty-eight hours. But a, a, as the chairman said, um, you know, we, we, we do place, I, I know personally I place a lot of weight on what our consultants say. Because, uh, you know, and, and I, I certainly don't mean that to negate your experiences as, as residents of, of the area, and you, you know the area better than anyone else. But we also, um, I, I certainly defer to experts. I do it in, in my own job every day. And, and, you know, when we have, you know, true neutrals here, as, as we do with, with Dr. Greeley and, and Mr. Tremelli, who are here exclusively to help educate us and sift through the information that's being presented by the applicant and, and tell us what's, what's, what, what, what carries water and what doesn't. You know, I, I have to rely on, on that information. It, it, it's, it's less than ideal. There, there's, there's not a good, easy decision here, but, um, you know, I, I, I think we certainly have investigated, um, the circumstances here, um, you know, pretty thoroughly. And, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Nemezak. Are you done?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I leave it at that.
You said that much better, much better than I could have.
I have no comments.
No comments? No comments? Great. So then, um, what are we doing here? Presentation? So the public hearing is going to stay open until the applicant returns, but at this point, I'm going to make a motion to adopt a negative declaration pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act for the reasons stated in parts one, two, and three of the EAF for this application, twenty-three dash oh-two, two oh-three Beach Street.
Second.
One more favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that being said, this is going to the zoning, and they're going to assess the variances that have been requested by the applicant. Um, and after that, it comes back here, correct? So it's going to be back here, we'll see how it goes with the variances, um, and then we'll take it up if and when you guys are back here.
Yeah. And I certainly encourage the, uh, the, the interested parties to, uh, to be present at the meetings of the, uh, the zoning board of appeals.
Right, so their purview at this point is to review the variances that are being requested and act, act on their best, um, and act on those. So I'm making a motion to forward this application, twenty-three oh-two, two oh-three Beach Street subdivision to the zoning board of appeals for consideration of necessary variances for this application.
Second.
One more favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. The next application is twenty-three eighteen Bout Boxing LLC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Take care.
Have a nice summer.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, enjoy it. Relax a little bit. All yours.
Yep.
Good evening. Is it okay to begin?
Yes.
Yes.
Been waiting for this. Go ahead. You can use the mic.
Yep. Good evening. My name is James Gibbons with Gibbons Engineering, and I'll be, uh, presenting the information on Bout Boxing at seventy-six Garth Road for the special use permit. Last time, the board had, uh, heard about this application, we, uh, we hadn't discussed the special use, uh, issues, so I wanted to go over those tonight and, uh, continue with the application. Is that okay to do that, or?
Okay.
So, um, in terms of the, the... So, in terms of the, the items in the, the law, we, we want to go over the, the main items that the board would definitely have to look at. The space is existing, there is no exterior construction expected, it's part of the existing space, so nothing's going to occur outside. So we feel that because of that, we're not really going to do much with landscaping, exterior improvements, and so on and so forth. So the internal space is about twelve-hundred square feet. It's gonna function more like a private educational type of class as opposed to a traditional gym, so there's not gonna be a ring, any kind of competition or, or intense type of, of exercise. There won't be a pool, there won't be any kind of retail sales of, of food or beverages. So it's gonna be a very simple location to teach and to help people improve their skills and have some fun at the same time. It's a small space, it's only twelve-hundred square feet. I was talking to Alec before the meeting, who is going to be the, the principal of this space, and he feels about eight people will probably be present most of the time, and maybe later on, the, the sixteen people that I discuss in my report. But it's intimate, it's private, there, there's a, it's a quiet type of establishment. In fact, in, in Roslyn, where Alec has his other space, there's a spa next, next to his space, and there's never been a complaint or any kind of issues with noise or, or the intensity of the, the workout going on inside. So we, we feel it's small, it's cozy, no exterior changes, so we don't feel that'll negatively infect, affect the neighborhood. The big issue is parking. I did look at the issue of trying to park cars behind this, this establishment in the condominium unit behind. From what I understand, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about changing the parallel parking to maybe diagonal. Well, there's just no way with the backup lane possibility and, and the ability to put any kind of parking from a parallel to a, a diagonal type of, of activity. The other possibility was to see if the landlord was available to provide parking within the condominium complex, and we just don't have, have that as a possibility right now. Alec has prepared some photographs, if I could give it to the board, showing you various times of, of parking that's available, and, yeah, go ahead, Alec. And the, the possibilities of parking, you can see in the pictures, there's plenty of spots on the street.
Hold on one second. Could you just hand them over?
Yep.
Yeah, just a few.
He's got ten sets, so.
Oh, he does?
So I said, put one set on the easel.
Oh, and pass them out? Good idea. We literally get the picture, yes.
Thank you, Alec.
Back to you.
So we, we kinda try to show the, the availability of parking on the street, and it's our belief that because of the small size of the class, the various times that, that it might be possible to use on-street parking, given that we can't provide parking off-street behind the location or to modify the parking lot that exists. There seems to be plenty of space over at the Freightway Garage and the adjacent lot next to it, if it's needed, but we don't even think that that parking would be needed, except for maybe a, a very rare occasion, but it's our belief that we, we don't envision any parking needed, given the small size of the class. But in, in terms of providing the board actual off-street parking spaces, we, we don't have that to, to provide. So that, that's one of the, the major concerns that we wanted to be straightforward about. The other issue, aside from maybe variances, would be that because the building is an existing building, and there's a requirement of a hundred-feet setback from the property line to a, the, the gym for a special use permit, the, the building is existing, there's no way to provide that hundred-foot setback, so we indicate it's pre-existing, we're not doing any exterior construction, but we're right on the property line in front of the, the building at the sidewalk. We're not gonna change any exterior lighting, we're not gonna create any kind of public address system or any of the other things that might go with what you'd see in a gym, it's, it's just gonna be quiet and cozy. Nothing mechanical outside, no live type of activity, everything inside the, the space. Alec would like to run the, the, the business where he does open before nine AM, and that's, that's not allowed according to the requirements of the special use permit, so we are looking to do the, the teaching and the activity of, of this business before nine, but it would be a very private, one-on-one kind of class with an individual or two. So that, that's another item I, I highlight out to the board. Again, no landscaping, no exterior work. We don't really expect an issue where children need to be picked up with the gym. If there's any young youngsters or, or teenagers, they're gonna be with their, their parents, and it's, it's not like a congregation, it's a very small and cozy type of environment. There's no roadwork plans, it's a pre-existing building. And then, of course, the, the issue of, there's just not enough parking off-street in item J, and there's no pool that will be on this space, it's just not part of the, the concept for the client. So with that, I wanted to open up to the board any questions you may have and, and discuss this if, if you so wish.
Sure, just stand by. So, these points, the ones you gave us, he's at, do we believe he's adequately addressed these requirements? I think he, is this what you use, this checklist for the most part, to prepare your responses? I think you, maybe you didn't address them verbatim, but you did cover on everything that we use for the special permits.
Yeah, if you want, we could go verbatim.
Yeah, I, I think you.
Yeah, I think, I think we've, we've got them here.
Yeah, I got the idea.
Yeah, but this will require more, more than a handful of variances, which would, would be required to be obtained from the ZBA, right?
Right, right, there's three variances that we've identified that they would have to obtain. One is for.
Parking.
Being on the lot line as opposed to a hundred-feet setback.
Yep.
One is, another is for opening prior to nine AM, and then the last is the, the parking variance. So you can recommend to the, when you send it to them, you can recommend to the zoning board your opinions that they can weigh.
I think you should try to move the lot line.
Yeah, right.
Just kidding.
It's, it's been a while, and a lot has happened since you guys were last here.
It was just a month ago.
But this last application is like.
And actually, it was, it was only four weeks ago.
It's like seven, seven months into our years, or something. But I guess if I remember correctly, maybe Alec explained to us, it's, the hours are not the same hours that coincide with when most of the parking is taken, which is the, the dinner hour, and the amount of traffic is much less than you would expect from a typical health, health club.
That's what we're seeing, what the, the pictures do demonstrate, the, the times that Alex would wanna do the teaching.
Yeah, they're great pictures, and I like to believe them, but, and, and that's kind of what he said when they came in here last time, so.
But the one concern I have is, I, I know that Alec said last time, and he presented very effectively last time on the concept, and the enthusiasm is all there, and, but, but I do know, in keeping with people's typical schedules, that, that the classes, the, the non-one-on-one sessions are more likely, and they're not big classes, but they're more likely to be first thing, maybe, maybe some nine o'clock, but eight, maybe eight, nine o'clock, and in the evenings. So, you know, I don't know that, look, I think the, the one most significant concern I have is, is on parking, and I know that there were a few ideas that were floated, and some of them don't seem to be really viable ones. There was a suggestion made by a gentleman here a mere four weeks ago, and, and it was, and, and again, I don't know how this would, whether this is viable or not, and whether, you know, and I believe it involved the, the village of Scarsdale as well, and, but, but there's apparently a lot there that, that, that has potential spaces that if, if somehow, and, and there was some suggestion that those could potentially be metered, and it sounds like, to me, quite frankly, well beyond your ability to simply wave a magic wand and have it done. But if there's, you know, I, I would certainly encourage the applicant to explore every avenue. And, and it, you know, because I, I think that's what the zoning board is definitely gonna wanna hear, is, you know, what, what, what have you looked at? What have you tried to do to, to address this, the parking issue? Because the lot line's not really an issue, and they'll determine, you know, whether they wanna let you open before nine o'clock or not. But, but the parking is something that, you know, a- anyone who's, who's been in that Garth Road area, you know, it, it is perpetually a problem, and it's a problem in many parts of our town. But, but this one happens to a but on Scarsdale as well, and there was a suggestion last time that there could be some form of, there, there, there seems to be the potential for availability. I remember there was a discussion of, you know, metering spaces that are right now being underutilized in a, a parking lot because people are not going to work in the city as, as frequently as they used to pre-pandemic. And that, you know, again, I don't know what discussions can be had, who, who you can go to other than go to Lucas in, in the first instance, and, and he may be able to help coordinate discussions with, or point you in the right direction. But I think that would go a long ways towards, you know, if you, if you were able to, to point out that we've secured, you know, the, the possibility of some additional spaces here, that would really show some good faith and some initiative, I think, that would probably, I would hope, result in your application being viewed more favorably by the ZBA, okay?
Thank you. Any more comments, guys?
No.
This is an open, public hearing. Any comments from the public about this application?
Or from the applicant.
Uh, first, you want it?
Yeah.
Add on?
Hi, I'm Alec. So what you were suggesting about the, the parking spaces, so there's a big parking lot that has a lot of reserved parking, it's, it's a Scarsdale lot. So I did talk to them. So if I had to pre-reserve it, it would be too expensive, it would be over ten thousand dollars a month in spots that we don't plan on ever using. But what they did say was, if ever needed, you know, they do have more than twenty-eight open spots. So if ever needed, I could just send cars there, and then what I was thinking is, and they, they have hundreds of spots that they say that are open for daily use, would be if we were to send them there, and then whether I pay or they pay, whatever, they're open spots. So if, if they're, and I don't know how that would work, but, 'cause if I had to get it on contract, it, it wouldn't work anyway, but I, I didn't know if it was that you need access to twenty-eight spots or that you officially need to have twenty-eight spots. 'Cause access, they said they have a hundred, in one of the parking lots, they, you know, they said they're open spots, you know, it's forever. So, so I did talk to them, and they said they do have that ability if needed. And there's also metered parking all over the place that would fall under it, so I did.
Is there metered parking in that parking facility, or just around the neighborhood?
Around, and there's another lot where, what you guys were referencing too, that like, that lot that was not used and it's metered before six PM or something.
Yes.
Anyone can technically use that, but this is different, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, well, it seems like you've taken the initiative, and I do appreciate that. And, and I also understand that, you know, you're, you're not gonna reserve spots, you're probably working on too tight a margin to begin with. You know, that, that would just blow your, your finances out of the water. But, you know, certainly I would, you know, I don't know if there's a, I don't know even who you'd speak to in Scarsdale or, or within that, whether that's a municipal lot or not, but i- i- if, if they could turn some of those spaces rather than being kind of reserved for whomever in, into metered spaces as well, that would increase the capacity in the neighborhood, which is something that you could point to, to the zoning board of appeals. But certainly, you know, the availability, if, if that's something you can verify to the zoning board of appeals, is probably helpful. You know, again, I, I can't speak for, for that board, but, you know, I would, I would definitely try to firm up whatever that, that commitment is or, or, or whether there are any other options available that would be usable, that would be, you know, user-friendly, I should say. Because, you know, nobody wants to pay for a, a, a parking meter and, and have to look at the, their, their watch and find out, you know, am I, am I about, you know, did I put enough money in the meter? Maybe that's not a, a big issue with, with, you know, paying with an app. But people will always go for, I can speak for myself, they always love to get free parking. I always personally see it as vindication from the almighty when I get a very good parking space. It means I'm living my life very well, and I'm being rewarded for it. But a free spot, yeah, you like that, Father Sorgi? People will always go for a free spot, you know, and, and people will take up all the free spots first before they put a nickel in the meter, or a quarter, whatever it is. So the more you can, the, the, but the more, ultimately, the more availability you can point to, you know, and, and these photos are great, I mean, they show that during parts of the day, there's plenty of availability. But there are other parts of the day that we all know that it becomes a lot tighter. And so that's, that's what the zoning board of appeals is going to be looking for, okay?
So, I think you've warmed up with this board, you've presented it pretty well, you've got us convinced of your intentions and what you're doing, and as Mr. Nemisak said, what you could offer them. And so when you go to present to the zoning board, do this again, add what he said, present your case, and they're reasonable, guys, they'll understand that. So I mean, we're gonna send you to, at least I'm gonna make a motion to send, but I think you've done a good job here presenting what you have, just do it again, and you'll, you know, and see what they say. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Cool. So let's get this moving then, what am I doing? So, public hearing, I.
Yep, we have, we, it's open, so.
Anyone else? It stays open, good, 'cause you're coming back, right? So I make a motion to forward application twenty-three eighteen Bout Boxing LLC, seventy-fourth Garth Road, to zoning board of appeals for consideration of the necessary variances for this application with the following recommendations, I mean, we recommend that zoning look favorably on the variance and do what they need to let this applicant, applicant take their space.
Second.
One more favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great summer.
Congratulations. You want your pictures back? Yeah, why don't you take these?
You may probably use these with the zoning.
Yeah, you're gonna have to organize them again, 'cause we made a big mess.
No, I'll just keep these for the file, yeah, I'll keep them.
I might recommend, if you're gonna give them to zoning, just organize them like on sheets or something, 'cause, yeah, this is. They're good pictures, but flipping through them to sort of negate their use for the mess, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Next application. Next application. Oh my, um, alright.
We're finally at the new business.
Next application, 2313 Embassy Cleaners, 826 Scarsdale.
And this isn't really new business. We saw you guys not that long ago.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Rifkin and I'm the owner of the property, property at 826 Scarsdale Avenue. And I want to thank you for agreeing to consider our change of paint color. I'm also the owner of Embassy Cleaners. I purchased this property a little over a year ago and my company Embassy Cleaners will occupy this property in its entirety. Uh, I wanted to come here tonight to personally present to you as I will be part of the Eastchester business community. And I expect to be a positive contributor to the Eastchester community as a whole. For point of reference, Embassy Cleaners is the largest dry cleaner in Westchester County. We've been established locally since 1937. We are a high-end dry cleaner and we have been selected as one of Amer- one of America's best cleaners annually since 2004. One of only 30 dry cleaners that are selected annually out of approximately 40,000 dry cleaners around the country. We've been based in Larchmont for over 85 years. And now we will be relocating a large part of our business and our operations to Eastchester, including our offices, our production, uh, route distribution. And we will also be relocating our current Scarsdale retail store, uh, from Scarsdale Village to this building. Additionally, we'll be adding a large tailoring and alteration space with a separate entrance with a particular focus on bridal alterations, which we believe is an area that is vastly underserved in the county. It seems that many people who have wedding gowns, uh, that are va- are high-value wedding gowns are going into Manhattan for this work. Uh, and we expect to really focus on this and to draw from all over the county. And some of these customers will presumably be spending money at other businesses in Eastchester, uh, while visiting the area. Regarding the building, we originally presented this application for a color change to the ARB as per the town's procedure. Our original presentation showed the building in a mint green color. And I believe you have a drawing of, uh, a rendering of what our new color would be. The original color was not appreciated by most members of the ARB. And a recommendation was made that we instead consider softening this color to a sage green, which is what we did. Uh, and by the way, our brand colors are this mint green, uh, and blue. Uh, you may have seen our, our trucks on the road and, and you may have noticed that, uh, before. So, uh, we wanted the building to sort of represent what our branding was and, uh, unfortunately the ARB didn't, uh, see eye to eye with that.
Very tough at the ARB.
Yeah, for sure. We had a subsequent meeting, uh, with ARB earlier this month and we presented, uh, a shade of sage green, uh, like they suggested. And, uh, the ARB, uh, had a positive reaction to that. And, uh, this is the color that they're recommending to this board for approval.
Okay. And that's the only, the only, uh, your application is just about the colors, right?
Just about.
Because everything else that we, we approved?
Everything else has been, yes. Everything else has been approved, yes.
They should be a pretty easy one.
I, I figured you guys, I think you guys deserve something easy right now after the last two hours.
Particularly seeing as our hard-working ARB, uh, approved this color on, on the second go-round, so.
Yes.
I, I, I think that's probably good enough for me.
So it's the, it's the sage 10-458?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I got nothing. What's that? Right, that's existing.
Well, the color gives a nice definition.
Yes, it's, it's very muted.
Yeah, I'm ready to approve it.
You ready? Okay, good.
This is pretty easy, guys.
Yeah, they wore us down. So, um, what are we doing here? So this is a public hearing. So I make a motion to open the public hearing. Application 2313 Embassy Cleaners.
Second.
226 Scarsdale Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody?
Going once, going twice. I make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing on this application. Embassy Cleaners, Scarsdale Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve this, uh, this color scheme in this application, 2313 Embassy Cleaners.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Yep. And Mr. Rifkin, I appreciated your, even though you're only changing the colors, you, you got a kind of free advertising time in there. It was very, very well played.
Listen, there's at least a dozen people here. It could be potential customers.
We have a massive.
We have a big audience on TV.
Massive, yeah.
I was going to ask why I should leave my current dry cleaner and come up to you guys. It's a little bit out of the way, but I'm sure, sure there's a good reason.
Well, we, uh, we look forward to having at least some of you as our clients moving forward.
Great, thank you.
I want to thank you very much for your consideration and your decision.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful summer.
Good luck.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Next application is 2322 Westchester Meat Market, 1 Mill.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is John Yanecito. I'm an architect and I'm representing Westchester Meat Market, the tenant at 1 Mill Road. Uh, we are requesting a special use permit, uh, to provide outdoor dining at the front of the existing meat market in Delhi. Uh, the proposed, uh, outdoor dining is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. Uh, the proposed, uh, the proposed outdoor dining, uh, will, will have five tables with 20 seats and will be, uh, located completely within the limits of the property lines. We are proposing to place new planters along the side, uh, lot line and the front lot line to, to define the dining area and provide a separation to the public sidewalk. Uh, we're also proposing two umbrellas within the seating area. Uh, the hours of operation will be 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the same as the, uh, the business hours. Uh, no music, no additional lighting, no additional signage is proposed for the dining area. Uh, and all the tables and chairs will be stored indoors after business hours.
And the umbrella as well? The umbrellas?
Not the umbrellas, just the chairs and, and the tables will be stored inside. The umbrellas will stay outside and be tied, tied back. Then we have this area highlighted in red. That represents an existing, uh, planting bed which encroaches into the existing sidewalk. Uh, we did meet with the, uh, with Rocco Latella from the highway department out at the site. Uh, and it was determined that the, uh, the planting bed had to be removed, uh, because with the new, the new, um, planters on, on our side of the property line and the, the planting bed encroaching on the sidewalk, there was just not enough room for pedestrians to get through. Um, so what we came up with was, uh, the highway department was going to remove the existing tree that's there. And then, uh, my client was going to repair and patch the existing sidewalk. Uh, also the, the highway department recommended adding two additional planters out at the curb. And then those locations will be, uh, reviewed, uh, by the highway department, uh, before they're installed. We don't know the exact location of the two additional planters yet, but they will happen along the, the curb line in front of the building. Okay, and then on the furniture. Those planters, uh, will be black and they will be in two sizes, a 12 by 30 and a 15 by 15. The tables will be 30 inches round, uh, and will be metal with a black fin- finish. The chairs will be metal with a, a vinyl wicker in a navy blue finish and the umbrellas will have a, a navy blue finish. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the, uh, the tree that's, that would be removed, the planting bed, this is a pretty immature tree? Is this, I'm, I'm looking at a Google Maps photo right now and it looks, I'm trying to figure out when this is from, but it looks like it's, it's a relatively recently planted tree.
Yeah, it was planted not too long ago. So I, uh, Rocco said he can actually pull it out and plant it somewhere else in town.
Okay. Is there any thought to, um, putting, putting a, uh, well, basically moving the planting bed down a little further into, uh, but I, I, I know that there's seating next, there's outdoor seating at the pizza place just down the.
Well, there was. I, I think they didn't renew their application, so, but they, they definitely can if they wanted to, but, uh, yeah, so the two ends could potentially have outdoor dining. I guess they could, but the, the problem with, what, what Rocco was saying was the problem with putting another planting bed there is the planting bed has to be too large and, and the, the sidewalk is not very large right in that area. Um, so it would have to encroach it to the sidewalk and then drive pedestrians back onto the, onto the private property to walk around. So it would make just more sense not having any trees. This is the only, if you look at the whole space between Parsons and, and White Plains Road.
Yes.
It's the only tree on that whole line.
Yep.
Um, so that's why we came up with the idea of having the planters as a better option. Uh, and if you, if you go down towards, um, White Plains Road, there are planters, um, on the island and also on Fisher Avenue.
But there are limits to what planters can do. I mean, I know that, uh, on, on Mill Road there, um, which I, I pass every day on my walk down to the train station. Particularly in the springtime, I, and I know that, when, when they redid that area, they, they took down a lot of the older trees and then they put up new trees. But they traditionally had pear trees there and they just looked wonderful in the springtime and, and, and obviously it gives the entire, the, the entire area, uh, just a better feel. It isn't just all concrete, um, when, when you have trees and they provide shade and, and, you know, it's, it's more in keeping with the character of what, you know, that sort of downtown Eastchester, if, it's sort of the center of town right there. What, what I, I believe it ought to look like. So, um, you know, I, I really have no, again, I think the, the suggestions for the outdoor dining are all very good. I'm just wondering, is there a way that, um, we can, and, and I, I see where this particular, um, planting bed is and, you know, is there a way that that can be moved? So that you, you do still have, uh, a, a planting bed between Parsons and, and Route 22 that doesn't interfere with, uh, your right of way. And it's not a, it's not a, it, it's a pretty recent vintage tree, so it's not like we're, we're cutting down some priceless, you know, 100-year-old tree, uh, which I would have real problems with. The fact that it can be actually dug up and moved is, is comforting. But, uh, you know, I, I, I would prefer if there was, you know, if, if there was a tree there somewhere. I just like the, I like that look better than I do a bare area with a, a few planters.
Yeah, and I think, I think we looked at that with, with, uh, with Rocco when we were out there and I think the, the issue was that the planting bed had to be larger than that, that,
Yeah.
piece of stamped concrete that's there. Uh, and, and just having a plant, a tree in that little stamped concrete area to allow enough space for the sidewalk, uh, just, the tree would not, not do well there.
Yeah, I, I know, on, on Fisher Avenue going down towards Tocco, they have some planting beds that have, you know, the, the tiniest of, 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 uh, you know, earth area and, you know, just know that, that some of the trees aren't doing that well. You need a, you need a certain amount of space to make it work.
Also, as they get larger, the root bed's going to get bigger and it's going to start popping the curb and the street and can create some issues down the road.
But not a reason not to plant trees, Mr. Yanecito.
Well, we're going to have small trees in the planters.
So, um, I just, I guess a couple of comments. I just noticed there's a street lamp there too.
Yeah, so the street lamp is within the, um, uh, within the stamped concrete part?
Oh, so that's not part of the sidewalk?
It's, it's a, it's a portion. So there's, there's enough room for the sidewalk. So if you look at the, uh, the photos that I, that I submitted, the planting bed is so much larger than that, uh, that strip of red, uh, stamped concrete. And the lamppost happened within that stamped concrete area.
Oh, it's, that's not, that's not walking area anyway?
Yeah, it's not walking area.
Yeah, that's right.
But the 5.9 is from the curb to the property line, right?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, 5.9, no. I mean, this is 9.7, no, that's, that's, yeah.
It's 5.9. But at the location of the lamp, at the location of lamp, it's not 5.9, right?
No.
It's less.
Probably 48 inches.
The, the location of the lamp is not?
Right, it says 5.9 is the clear sidewalk dimension from curb to property line. That's not walking space. That's just a dimension. How much do you think is, uh, actually available for walking space there? In particular, the lamp. I mean, it's like.
So 5.9, I don't see where, where's?
Uh, 5.9, I'm sorry, not 5.9, 5, 6 feet, 5.9. On the, on the, uh, on the layout.
Yeah, 5.9, that's, so that's from the propping line to the outside.
Of the curb, right. So I'm asking, how much space do you think is available as a walking surface, particularly at the lampposts?
This is probably 3 feet. 42 inches.
When in doubt, use a scale. I, I just think it's very little. I, I don't know what you can do about it. I just, it's your property, it's the tenant's property, so we can't tell them what to do on their property, I guess, can we, or?
Well, I mean, we did, I did circulate the, um, the application to the chief of police, the fire chief, the superintendent of highways, um, and the county department of public works. The, uh, chief of police did, um, he didn't see any issues with emergency response, but he did note the narrowness of the sidewalk. Um, he, I'll just read you what he wrote. "I do have a concern that if they make the sidewalk that narrow and they remove the tree, it may force pedestrians to walk into the roadway. This is a busy roadway and that area of town is frequented by the many young people who tend to travel in groups or on bikes, skateboards or scooters. If traveling in large groups or riding and there are people coming the other way, they may need to walk into the street. Even if the tree is removed, there is a lamppost and signpost in the way which may make them walk into the street." So that was the concern he expressed.
And it's a bus stop, right? And the bus probably stops right around there?
Yeah, the bus stops there also.
Forgot to ask the feline folks.
But it is. It's just, it's a lot of congestion right there.
I mean, the, the county department of public works and transportation did kind of also come to the similar conclusion. In general, they tend to frown on outdoor dining on any county road, which is kind of a broad, you know, um, mandate, but, um, they just said, um, but they, they don't control the sidewalks. So they just expressed an opinion that, you know, they thought that the intersection was a busy intersection and very tight. That was what they said.
Was, Lucas, was the police department's comment largely based on, um, if you didn't remove the tree? Or, I mean, it, it said it's still tight with the lamppost if you do remove the tree, but the first part of what you read, I believe was if you did not remove the tree?
Right, right. So he, he was saying even if you, even if the tree is removed.
Oh, even if, okay.
The lamppost and signpost are in the way.
Correct. But, but the first part of what you read was if you didn't remove the tree, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, he, he, the, the case he makes is that it, there's a potential for pedestrians to go into the roadway regardless, whether you, if you, certainly if you keep the tree, but even if you remove the tree, um, his concern is that people will walk in the road.
I mean, 42 inches is the width of the table here. It's just very small. So who controls the sidewalk in a situation like this? It's their private property, but it's.
It's like, it's like a layer of responsibility. The closest to the building is the, is the owner, then comes the town. And then once you hit the curb, then it becomes the county.
So how do we encourage you to give us a little more room for our sidewalk?
Is, is there any way that the, uh, what, what is, what is the seating configuration going to be and is there any give in terms of?
We could push the, uh, we could push the, uh, the planters a little closer to the building. To shrink that a little bit. That's not, I don't think that would be a problem. It's still have enough room to get the five tables in there. The only thing is that we're forcing the public to walk on, on private property.
Well, they do now, right?
It's the same situation with the gas station on the corner.
Yeah.
The, the sidewalk's very narrow and everyone cuts right through the, the gas station all the time.
Yeah. Now, our concern is quite frankly, less with that and more with people getting run over by buses. That we don't want. That we don't want to have happen, all right?
Yeah, absolutely. And look, if we have to, we have to bring it back a foot or 18 inches or even two feet, I think we can, we can, we can manage that.
We'll take it, right? Two feet will get us, uh.
But you, I mean, I would, I would think you need to maintain clearances for the tables as well.
Yeah, right.
So you need.
So we have nine, nine and a half feet.
They're big tables.
And the, and the planters are.
Eighteen inches? Got scale. Planters are 12 by, 12 by 30 and 15, so.
Yeah, okay, so you got, you got almost like nine.
Thirty-six, 30-inch tables, so, do not remember large tables?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, I think, I think if you did that and you just get, got that extra, you know, 18 inches or so, that's a big difference, yeah, 18 inches.
Yeah, so now you're looking at, instead of a 42-inch sidewalk, you're looking at a 60-inch, right?
Yeah, that's.
That's five feet.
Yeah.
It's better than what's there. Sure, we'll take it. I mean, we'd like a little more, but.
So, so just so I understand, you're, you're saying that you want the tables to have like fewer seats around them?
Oh, no, we just want, I don't really care what happens inside their property, I just want more space on the, on the.
Would, would the types of tables you purchased need to change or?
I think the 30-inch tables would still fit, 'cause then instead of, instead of nine foot, nine foot five or nine and a half feet, we're gonna end up with, what, nine, eight feet. Eight feet should work with, with the planters and with the tables, so.
Oh, I see. So you would, you'd move the planters closer?
Move the planters closest to the building.
Right, okay. Would that leave adequate space for, 'cause the fire chief had a comment that the applicant should show the width of the aisle on either side of the tables so that we can determine if it complies with the fire code?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would comply with the.
What is, what is that dimension? Is it 36?
You can tell me.
Well, it would be, if it's ADA, it would be 36 at least, but.
Yeah, 36.
But I don't know if that's the same requirement for fire, but why would the fire department have to go through those tables? It's outside.
It's just what he said.
Tables are metal, right?
Yes. Yeah, they are metal tables, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what dimension he's looking for and if we'll meet that requirement. Is that, uh.
Well, I mean, that can also be worked out, you know, later, you know, you know, with our building inspector and stuff like that.
I'd like to see six feet for the sidewalk. Yeah, I wouldn't be so concerned about buses running people over.
Sorry, I mentioned that, John.
There's no room for tables then?
Whether it's 42 inches or 60 inches, if a bus hits the, jumps over the curb, it's not gonna make a difference.
You're saying we'll end up with 60? It's five feet.
Five feet's pretty good.
Yeah, okay. I'm good. Do we do the public hearing?
Not yet.
What, what, is this going to be seasonal? I mean, this is going to be.
Yeah, it's just seasonal, spring and summer, maybe a little bit in the fall.
Yeah, yeah, probably late spring to, you know, maybe early fall.
Yeah, October.
Who monitors this? Does the police?
Our code enforcement officer would, would, would monitor it.
Right. But I mean, if there's any trouble with people and pedestrians and roadways and everything, how is that picked up?
I mean, it would get, a complaint would get filed with our, somebody, somebody would inevitably complain to our office.
In terms of the, well, it depends on what you're asking. If you're asking if you determine at some point in time that five feet is not enough and it, that is, if it's meeting the condition and it is approved, it is approved. If whatever is approved, if somehow the planters start inching, you know, across what was agreed upon, that now that's a violation of the condition and that's something that our code enforcement officer would issue, you typically notice a violation and give them an opportunity to cure. And if they didn't, he would re-inspect and issue a summons and then we would prosecute it down here. So it really is a question of, once you set it in stone, are they complying with it or not? As opposed to you rethinking what you set in stone?
I think it's rethinking what it said, right?
Yeah, I think you gotta be happy with it.
Stepping off the curb and buses slamming on their brakes before running them over.
John, answer me this question if you can. The, the pizza place, right, that, that had the seating up until recently, apparently, how far out did they come on to the?
I, I don't, I didn't do that application, but I believe that was set a little further back and it was actually set up on a platform.
Yeah, it was high, yeah.
Yeah, so I think they were a little further, a little closer to the building.
A little closer to the building, okay.
Than, than this one. Exact number, I don't know. I mean, we could probably go back and look at the drawings.
They were, they were also flying a little blind with that. They didn't have a survey. They just put those there and then our department gave them a violation, they took it down. And then we said to them, you can do this, but you need to have a survey that shows where your property begins and ends. And then they said, well, forget it, we don't want to do that. And so then they just took it down.
Right, so we, we had a new survey done for this, for this application. And I think there were some, some documents that showed eight feet. It turned out to be nine and a half feet, which was a little better. So initially, we were gonna make it eight feet anyway, because that's what we thought it was. So going to eight feet shouldn't be a problem. And even if we had to reduce the number of tables, we could. I mean, I think the minimum for the requirement for the special use permit is 12, 12 chairs or?
Right, 12, 12 seats, three tables.
Yeah, so if we can reduce it to 12 seats and maybe make them square tables and push them up against the building to make a little more room, so we, we could probably make it work.
Yeah, I, I, my, my point with, with the pizza place is that we didn't have any accidents that I'm aware of. And, and so, you know, not to say that, look, maybe we came precariously close and it never registered, but it, it's, it's been tried and true on that very block, it's, and it seemingly worked. You're, you're proposing something that's entirely within your property line?
Yep.
You know, so I, I think if we can get it as, as, as close to the building, leaving as much sidewalk as possible, I think, if I'm reading everyone else's.
I think it's minimum 60 inches, five feet.
So five feet.
Well, minimum.
Yeah, minimum, right.
If you can do more, we'll have you back every time.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll try.
Yeah, can I clarify, what's the minimum you want?
I'm saying, at this point, I'd love to see six feet. It seems like that's a bigger ask. We'd like you to look at it, but we're saying.
Then that would be a seven-foot dining area with a six.
Is that enough if you put square tables up against the?
I mean, if we didn't have the planters there, it might, it would work. But then the planters doesn't provide anything.
Yeah, and the planters provide a dividing line as well, which is kind of necessary.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could change it from planters to like a, some type of a railing, which is much thinner. But it's not gonna be as attractive.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, but I'm concerned about people getting run over by buses, not the aesthetic of the planters.
We can have it all, Mr. Chairman.
We can have it all.
We can have it all.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If the fire department wanted to see dimensions as well, is this something that you would want to have them look at before you take action?
I mean, I did forward him the plans.
Okay.
You know, he, he just asked for verification, but yeah, he didn't, yeah, we did circulate the plans.
I can, I can call Tom and, and show him the plan before we do it also.
Maybe just make that a condition of the approval that.
Right, but the apron's not walking surface, is it?
Yeah, it is. It's brick.
The, what material is the apron?
The apron?
The apron on the edge of the sidewalk, bordering the sidewalk and the street.
Is it brick? Is that, that red, that red? It's a stamped concrete?
It's stamped concrete.
Stamped concrete, yeah.
So it is part of the sidewalk?
Part of the sidewalk. I think that might have been lawn at one time.
Right.
And then they, they just changed everything to stamped concrete.
So technically, you have more than five feet, right?
Right, you do.
From curb to planters, curb to property line, I should say.
Curb to property line, we have, we have.
So the, the lamppost is, and the garbage can and the bus sign are just obstacles?
Five point nine feet from the curb.
Almost six feet.
To the property line.
Right.
For additional 18, we're gonna end up with six, seven, four, seven feet.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, except stamped concrete has a different surface feel, 'cause I'm very sensitive. And you almost feel like you're not supposed to be there. It's a trip hazard, yeah, it is. So you really shouldn't be walking on it.
I want everything to be smooth concrete.
But, but it is a buffer, you know, it, it does provide a, something of a buffer as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get this moving.
Yeah, I'm just trying, yeah, so I guess it's five feet, so we're saying. So how much more do we want? We want 18 inches minimum more from you, right? To get the 42, we said it's 42? With 5.9, which is 60?
This is, the sidewalk is 42 inches and then if you give it 18 inches, that'd be 60, right?
Right, so it's 60 feet, 60 inches.
Five feet.
Yeah.
Five feet plus the, plus the, the red part would give you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over, well, let's see how that goes. If you could do more, great.
Six, seven, seven and a half feet.
Yeah, okay, so another 18 inches.
Okay, so I'll push everything back 18 inches and then if we have to go down to, to four tables and 12 seats, that still complies with the special use permit.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, good. Do we do public hearing?
Down I go.
Hi.
You have to do a public hearing?
Public hearing, yep.
So I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2322 West Chester Meat Market, One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2322 West Chester Meat Market, One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So give me some notes here. So, I have to just, there we go. Uh, closed, so I make a motion to approve this application, West Chester Meat Market, One Mill, subject to the conditions we said about adding a minimum 18 more inches to the width or distance from the curb. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, John.
Great, thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, enjoy the summer.
Have a great summer.
Thank you.
The next application is the one we've all been waiting for, 2323 Parish of Immaculate Conception and Assumption Our Lady, 265 White Plains Road.
Good evening. My name's Nicholas Gabry from Bibbo Associates. We're the site planning engineers for the project. Tim Allen apologizes he couldn't be here tonight. He was double booked on another planning board meeting, so he had to be in another town tonight, so I'm filling in for him. He's brought me up to speed on the Immaculate Conception Church project, which is, I'll keep it fairly brief, 'cause it's a pretty simple driveway realignment of the existing driveway entrance for the existing church property. The existing driveway is connecting to White Plains Road and it's fairly narrow and very close to the existing ball field, the kind of sand brown area down there on the bottom part of the property. So shifting the prop, shifting the driveway approximately 50 feet to the south, which is to the left-hand side of that plan, north is pointing to the right, and connecting back to the existing parking lot. The driveway, the new driveway requires slight regrading. It's a very minor gentle slope that flows out towards White Plains Road, which is a DOT state highway, so we will be getting DOT permits for the state portion in their right of way to do the driveway entrance. So that entrance will be brought up to DOT standards, much wider curb cut, better flares for truck deliveries and passenger cars coming and going to the school and to the church. The, the slope is coming out towards West Chester Avenue, or White Plains Road, I'm sorry. But with DOT standards, we will be creating a low point at the curb line with the road so that water won't be flowing onto the state highway and there won't be any issues with ponding or icing in the winter. The existing driveway will be removed and just seeded and grassed. There'll be several parallel parking spaces along the new driveway added and a new pedestrian sidewalk, which will run down the right-hand side of that driveway, allowing pedestrians to come and go to the site much easier than now and much more safely. So very much a safety concern and improved situation in the new driveway.
You mentioned that the existing driveway, which is the entrance driveway to the church property, it was gonna be seeded, graded out and seeded. Is it gonna be graded at the same elevation of the field with retainage? Or is it gonna be, 'cause I know there's retaining walls on both sides, right?
I don't believe it's a major regrading. I believe the, the existing roadway will just be seeded and at the existing elevation it's at now. I don't believe there's plans, I do have the project team here with me and Father Sorgi to help answer any questions, but I don't believe there's any plans to create any regrading on that side.
I know there, there is a retaining wall, and this, this is the entrance to the parking lot. The egress is not getting changed at all, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is just the, and, and the egress is two lanes with, with parking, I think, on, on the either side. This is just one narrow lane right now, and that's, I guess, the way it's been for a long, long time. But it definitely does have a, a retaining wall that looks like it could be marble on the, or some, some sort of granite, some sort of stone for sure on the left when you come in. And then on the right, I think it's just a fence with, with, you know, a slope that, that has the ball field on the other side. So it, it, you know, definitely Louis is correct, there, there's something of a, a tunnel that you'd be left with if you didn't raise the, the elevation of that. But, but I'd certainly, I would want to see what, what, what you're doing with the new roadway.
Yeah, the new roadway, I believe, was approximately 2% to 3% in grade pitching upward from the White Plains Road up to the site. So I believe that's a slight regrading, partially filling maybe to create a little bit less of a tunnel. So I can talk about that with Tim and we can adopt that into the plan.
And how many, how many lanes is the, the new proposed entrance going to be?
It's, it's wide enough for two-way traffic, but I think the idea is to still have a main entrance and an exit to keep traffic flow organized and around the site simplified for the users.
But currently, it's, it's one fairly narrow lane, you know, with the, the retaining wall on one side and the, you know, the, the slope and the fence on the other with the ball field. Is it's gonna be two lanes or is it just gonna be one lane coming in? Yeah. Yeah, which is one lane, yeah.
One lane. You can see two lanes. Both of the arrows coming into the top, so two main entrances in. And here you can see the current.
So it actually joins up to the, the existing before it hits the, the main parking lot?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The existing driveway, which will be removed and seeded.
Yeah.
And it does connect almost back into the same location.
Got it.
That wall remains? That's the existing channel that you're just pointing to?
So, I think I understand now.
Yeah.
So, so it looks like on the left side of the driveway, the new driveway, there will be retainage or berm going up to existing grade. And then on the, on the right, yeah, exactly.
I know there, there's a slight high point here where some of the regrading will have to happen.
Yeah.
We leave this down slightly to the existing driveway, so I can look at our profiles and we can try to make that transition as mild as possible.
I know there's a big tree also at the end of the existing driveway on the left. I, I don't know if that can be salvaged or not, or what your intentions are with that.
We have, we have that tree marked, the 20-inch tree marked to be removed. It is right under one of the lanes.
Okay. All right. Are, are there gonna be trees planted? Is there a landscaping plan?
There isn't any plans to provide a landscape plan, I think, just the receiving of the, the created grass.
Because there was a, there was a, a house that was located on that property that got torn down. You know, it, it was not in the greatest shape, but I know that was removed. You can see it on, yeah, yeah.
You can see it here, it's already.
That's right.
Already there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm aware of that, so that's been removed. So you kind of have an open space right now, mostly open space with the exception of that. So you kind of have an open space right now, mostly open space with the exception of that one tree. But there, there were trees there beforehand and may, maybe that was a function of there being a, a house there. You know, I, I, I know this is, you know, I, I. I just ask if there's, you know, any, any plan to put any trees in that, in the, the, what's now, uh, the, the vacant area.
Uh, we can talk about that with the project team and we'll consider that.
Okay. I love trees, yep.
Right, because right now if you flip back to your colored, yeah, that, that, anyone else, that's fine. Right now, what is that space right now? I know there's, whatever is demolished, has grass been planted there? Uh, no, to the left.
Yeah.
This is, uh, this is grass area now where the building was?
Yes, it's all grassed over.
That was the house.
Yeah. Right. And I think there's also a wall that's getting built right there. That eighteen-inch wall at the south side by the street, I think it's identif, no, down towards the twenty-two. There's a, uh, proposed eighteen-inch high stone wall.
Uh, we have a stone wall shown here.
Yep.
With some steps coming up off the road, some steps.
But that's new, that's stone wall.
I think that's, I think that's existing, yeah. Yeah, why don't you guys grab the mic, by the way, uh, just because we, yeah, I know one record. I hope, I hope.
A part of it is, we are proposing, uh, an eighteen-inch stone wall to continue the existing stone wall that's here. So that, that would be filled in from this section to this section with a new stone wall.
Make it consistent, to make it consistent.
Because this is the existing one that's coming along here and then we'll just pick it up after the new driveway entrance and then.
Are you gonna, uh, repurpose the retaining wall that's on the left of the existing? Because that has a lot of nice stone on it. I, I, is that, is that the stone that you're gonna be using? For that stone wall?
Repurpose the stone over here?
Yes.
What we're doing is we're bringing up a sidewalk along that stone wall.
Oh, got it.
Picks up to this existing sidewalk, so you have pedestrian access along the existing, I mean, the new proposed driveway.
Okay.
That will be along that stone wall there. And what, and you know, one of the, again, about the safety issues is that we're pulling, the, um, the existing driveway was here. Now by pulling the, uh, proposed driveway away, we're increasing the distance from the ball field that's there now.
Good.
Is there gonna be any sight lighting or anything?
No, no, it's, we're not increasing the lighting at all.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about the rock outcropping, just, just to verify, there, there won't need to be any blasting to get rid of that?
Right now, we don't anticipate any blasting at all, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the only high spot that we have is right here.
What's the, just in general, this sign, the, uh, traffic pattern for a one-way street that is twenty-two, turning right in and there's two lanes there, I guess whoever's there can pull in to either way and then pick which lane they're gonna use?
Yes, you could have access, you know, by doing this with two lanes, you could access from this way.
You have access from both, so people making a left can also pull in with someone from the right.
And then the con, it would give us continuity from the exit because the, you know, the volume that comes in here with two lanes and when the volume coming out two lanes is, gives us a constant flow that you don't have a constriction point right now with the entry.
I guess in the mornings it gets jammed up because there's only one lane there.
So whatever volume comes in now can access it at the same time.
Although, although it does make sense to have, uh, a, a big, because mass ends at one time, but people get there with a variety of time.
And this also gives us, you know, again, it cleans up the access with the street, right? And then we also got a positive, I don't know if you saw the, uh, the comments from the county.
Yes.
Their first paragraph, you know, sums up what, about the whole concern about safety and the access flow, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fact that this came in today was almost divine intervention, wouldn't you say?
I guess while we're at it. Just one little point I had mentioned, the exit sign on the other side, sometimes that turns in, into after church, one lane because someone parks along the, this side on the left.
Oh, well, that's human nature, that's something that they have to deal with internally.
Yeah, can we do, can we put up a sign or something to get them to do that? Is there a sign? Yeah, why don't we put something there to get those people from parking there? Because, I mean, I know they want, should be a church and we're not discouraging it, but they really shouldn't park there. So can we add a sign there?
Yeah, there's parking on the right side as you exit, but the, the people park on the left, that's, it's not good.
Okay, cool, otherwise I'm good. We all wanna go home, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just, um, could we just ask about the two, there's two comments from the county letter that just didn't get addressed in the presentation, I just, if I could just ask. Um, the county planning board, um, made a comment about bicycle parking and electric vehicle parking. Are those possibilities on the site plan?
Uh, we'll, we'll talk about that with, uh, with the project team and make those considerations or respond to the board. There's nothing on the plan now for proposed bike parking, but we'll consider that.
Okay, uh, and then also they asked about, um, if it was possible with the new construction to use pervious pavement materials, um, for the additional parking spaces that are being built along the, the side of the road, as well as if any type of, um, landscaping treatments like rain gardens or whatnot could be incorporated in the landscaping plan to just mitigate the runoff that's, uh, from the, uh, the new pavement.
Yeah, I, I think the pervious paver spaces could be an option that could work here and help kind of manage the slight change in impervious, um, with the expanded driveway width and the new sidewalks. So we'll, we'll work on that with the project team and we'll talk and, um, come up with a design that works.
Where with that thing? The entire length of the new driveway?
Parking spaces?
It, it does strike me though, that with, with the removal of the, the building that was previously there, probably the net. Imperv, yeah, you've probably, yeah, but, but that's probably not counted in this, in this, yeah, it may not be.
Right, I mean, these are just longstanding county policies in general anyways.
Understood.
Kind of stuff you were, do we have to make a comment about the Department of, uh, Highways and the?
Right, I mean, I did refer the application to the, um, state DOT, um, permit engineer on June fifteenth. So I, I did send her the application.
But you think you got a, did you get a response yet?
Not yet, no.
All right. So is our approval gonna be contingent on that or that's just a detail that gets followed up later?
Uh, I mean, you could make a contingent on, on their approval.
And favorable response from the county?
Uh, one of the ideas here, uh, because the DOT can take a substantial amount of time, even for a simple realignment like this, is to maybe have some of the work that can be completed outside the DOT right-of-way. Start construction on that work, interior work of the driveway realignment, prior to the issuance of the DOT permit approval.
What if they deny?
Yeah.
Well, we, we would certainly have to make sure we're at a certain point where there, all the pre-application meetings and all the agreements have been in place, that the, the driveway is, is in the right spot with the DOT and they agree to that. We can work on that, um, but I know some of their final processing of the documents can hold up like a construction permit.
But I mean, that would be at your own risk, right?
It would be at our, our own risk of, yes, if they somehow declined the location.
Lucas, isn't the building permit contingent on the state DOT approval?
I mean, yeah.
Right.
Oh, so.
Yeah, so, right, you would, you would need that approval first before the town would issue a building permit to do the work.
We can talk to the building department about that, but, and verify that, but if that's the case, then, um, certainly we would have to get.
That's fine.
DOT on board.
Okay.
I too, you could work around that.
So, uh, public hearing?
Yeah.
Uh, we're just gonna see if anyone has any comments, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on, oh my gosh, um, application twenty-three dash twenty-three, Parish of Immaculate Conception.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, close the public hearing, same application, twenty-three, twenty-three, Immaculate Conception and Assumption of Mary, uh, Assumption of Our Lady.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so I guess just subject to the approval from the state DOT on the curb cut, uh, as a condition of approval, we make a, we make a motion to approve this application. Immaculate Conception and Assumption, two sixty-five White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Yep, thanks.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, next application is twenty-one seventeen, fifteen Tuckahoe. Excuse me.
Good evening, Michael Mascheracmo from Mascheracmo Engineering. Here for fifteen Tuckahoe, it's a proposed five-lot subdivision. Since we were last in front of the board, we've been working with George Malley's office in regards to the site drainage to come up with a, a viable solution for this project. One of the solutions we came up with is we created an extra lot. Called it Lot Number Six. And this is an unbuildable lot in size, so it doesn't need zoning. But what it does is it creates an area for us to do a, a subservice drainage system for the roadway to pick up all the water and then what we're doing is we're overflowing it down, to the right side of the existing house through an easement and tying into the storm drainage down on Tuckahoe Avenue. So that's what we've been working on, we still have a, a little bit more work to do with them as far as detailing all that and that's it.
So I think, and I read Joe's memo from a while ago when this was in front of us and that, I guess, I didn't read it in great detail, but I know he had a few pages, so those are the issues that you're addressing.
Yes, yes, a lot of them we've addressed already as far as the alignment of the road to create the curve, to meet the zoning codes and all that, so we've done a lot of that work, we're just right now detailing more the drainage, the, the whole drainage for not just the road, but also for the houses as well.
Was that empty lot on the original subdivision that you brought to us previously or that's been added?
No, that's been added, that's been added.
So that's a new plan, got it.
Yeah, so what we did is we shifted everything down in order to create that lot, so then we can, we had an area to put a drainage system for the roadway.
Cool. So the way it's been explained to me is you're here mainly to present what you have and get us to take lead agency on this, so you can move forward?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, cool, I'm good with that.
Yeah, when, when you were last before us, uh, it looks like we initially reviewed this in April of twenty-twenty-one.
Correct.
Uh, was, was it the same, um, the same number of, of single-family homes were proposed or, yeah?
Yeah, that, that's all stayed the same, it's still five single-family homes. Um, one, one of the, the changes which created a lot of, um, the revisions in all the drawings, the existing residents were proposing to keep, uh, even though it doesn't meet zoning, you know, we request to go in front of the zoning board at, at some point to give variances to try to keep that residence and then it would be just the construction of the four houses at the rear kind of help minimize the impact on Tuckahoe Avenue and the neighbors and all that and it kind of keeps all the construction in one corner out of the way.
Okay, so we can look at this more in the fall or in September? Cool, so I'm just gonna go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing, because this has never been a public hearing before? Guess not.
I think so.
Yeah, I guess it's not, okay, good, so I make a motion. I'm sorry?
It was never a public hearing.
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it has not been before, it's not an open one. So I do make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-one seventeen, fifteen Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments?
My name's Vincent Diaria, I live on the north side of the proposed property. Water has been an issue in that area before this, it's a swamp when there's regular rain. I understand that there is a system being set up to fix that. Um, you know, when I expanded my driveway, I had to put in a, a grate with a dry well and I had to get an architect and all this stuff for the town to approve it. Whatever they're putting in, who's maintaining it and who's guaranteeing if it breaks down, is it gonna be fixed? Or if the water gets pushed onto my property, uh, who, who's gonna be responsible for that? Because the sewer system, I don't have a sewer within four or five houses on the dead end, which is something that, we talked to the town before and that was denied. But, uh, I spent money on subpumps, backup generators, I don't want water in my basement and I just feel like this is bound to push water towards our area.
Are, are you to the east of the property? Uh, it, as I understand it, the, this property is bounded by a, a parking lot on the west.
No, I'm in the, I'm on the north.
The north?
Uh, so I'm right behind Country Markets. My backyard is Country Markets on one side and then the property on the other side.
So, let's see, not to put off your questions because they are going to be addressed in greater detail than we're able to tonight. Right now, the applicant is in front of us, just to, it's more a procedural thing right now for us to take.
I get that, but that last group that was here, seems to have spent a long time fighting the water problem and it was kind of passed over pretty quickly that the rules are all being followed. And it's great to say the rules are being followed, but when it's an issue for my house and my family, you know, it's great that new houses are getting built and the town's gonna get money and people are gonna get paid, but when money has to come out of my pocket to fix the problem that could have been fixed or shouldn't even exist at all, that's where it becomes an issue for me as, as a resident.
Well, you, you said yourself, you, you had to put in dry wells and, and, and all of this when you did construction. Uh, as, as the chairman was alluding to, um, you know, we, we have our consultants, uh, you, you heard, you were here.
Yeah.
You know, it, it, it may not be, it may not satisfy, uh, you know, everyone here, but you do understand that we can only, I, I, I'm not, I'm not a water expert, I have to rely on what they're telling me.
What ifs, you know, what if this happens, what if that happens?
So, so we have a process in place though, that, that, um, again, as the chairman was suggesting, you know, this, this is an initial phase, but there will be plenty of opportunity for this, this issue and water is a, a definitely a big issue, it was, it was a significant issue with the prior subdivision. I, I can see that since the last time this application was before us, the applicant has adopted, uh, sort of a technique that was used, uh, you know, on the Beach Street as well, two oh three Beach, which is to devote a lot to, um, to capturing some of the, some of the runoff, some of the, to managing some of the, the, the water. So there will be, there will be plenty of opportunity and, and importantly, you know, we will have a consultant who will, um, you know, who is as objective as we can find, um, who will evaluate, you know, i- is this a problem or not? Uh, and, and we, we have already received materials suggesting water's a problem here. So we, we're very aware of that right from the inception and the applicant will have to show us.
Yeah, come up and say, put it on record, I just wanna be on record as saying, you know. I mean, I, this is build away, I don't care about that, I mean, it's an empty space, uh, hopefully they clean up some of the brush behind it and improve it, but at the end of the day, you know, I just gotta make sure my house and, and my investment, which was based on what was there currently, doesn't get altered.
Yeah, and, and, and that's part of what this board is here for, to make sure that we're, we're hearing all of the, the, the viewpoints from the people who are most interested, uh, who have a sense of the neighborhood, who have a sense of the conditions and that we also then, uh, listen to our consultants who are professionals in, in their particular areas. So thank you.
Feel free to come back if.
Just so you're aware, uh, when the consultant is briefing the board, there'll be an opportunity for you to raise questions there too.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
I just wanna touch on the drainage and all that. One, one of the things with, uh, Tramelli's office is, um, number one, we did very minimal grading towards that side of the property because we did not want to affect any of the neighbors. What that also did was we created a little bit of a, a quote-unquote back pitch so then we captured the road that we're proposing and putting it into a drainage system and overflowing it to try to mitigate and minimize any possibility of affecting any of the neighbors as well. So that was part of the redesign.
That's all in the plans that our consultant's reviewing?
Yep.
That's all in the plans that our consultant's reviewing right now?
Correct.
Description, you just, okay, got it, thank you. Please.
Jean Gessoff, Five Duluth Place. So I just have always been told, and I think it's true, that there is a creek that runs through that property and it empties out at the Girl Scout Cabin and then runs down to California Road and Highland. Just if you could check that out and see if that's really true because we always get water when it rains. because we always get water when it rains and all along there you can, I mean, you could almost see that there's an underground creek. And if you walk, walk over the bridge at the Girl Scout Cabin, you can see that creek. Well, where's that coming from? I think it's coming from this property in our backyard. So just want to make you aware of that. 5 Duluth Place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More comments? Okay. Do they do, they've done a number of borings out here?
Yes, we did. We did a bunch of borings out there. We did about three or four.
They find groundwater somewhere? I guess we could ask.
The groundwater table towards the back is a little higher. That's why we decided to put the drainage more up in the front where we had better percolation rates, we had a better soil at the front.
How far down was the groundwater?
About four foot and change, roughly four feet.
That's the comment we got from someone.
Yeah, it was a little shallow.
It's right there.
Yeah. I mean, the other part of the, the whole application is going to be a full landscaping plan where we're working with our landscape architect to pick trees that'll help soak up some of the, you know, the groundwater as well and try to dry it up as well.
I guess this is more a question for the consultants. It might be seasonal or it's standing, groundwater?
I think it might be seasonal, be, just because the groundwater table always fluctuates. And especially this year, we had, we really had no snow. So it didn't have a chance for the ground to freeze like it typically does and it lowers the groundwater table. We had a lot of rain this year than snow. So the groundwater table is higher this year. If we have a drier summer, it'll lower, and if we have a real winter that we have a good amount of snowfall, it'll stay low as well. So groundwater table always fluctuates up and down.
And the proposed lot, I'll just call it the water retention, storm water retention lot, that, that just holds the water and then dissipates it over time. It holds it during a heavier water event and, and then dissipates it, but it doesn't drain into anything, right?
Well, no. So what we did in, in working with Mr. Tramelli's office is not only does it percolate into the ground, but on a very hard storm event, we have an overflow system which will go through the cul-de-sac just to the side of the, an easement down the side of the existing lot into, and then turn and go down Tuckahoe Avenue and tie into, there's large 24-inch diameter pipes as storm drainage. That's, I think it's Sage Place is where we're tying into. So when we do have a large influx of a big rainfall, we do have something for it to get out and, you know, minimize any impacts on neighbors. And the same thing will hold true with the drainage for the lots. We're going to have overflows to go into the storm drainage and get out.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, we can talk more about this another time, but for now, we leave the public hearing open. I make a motion. No more comments from the public. It's going to stay open. So I'm going to make a motion to classify the 15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision as an unlisted action under SECR and for the Eastchester Planning Board to declare itself, to declare its intent to be lead agency in the coordinate review of that action pursuant to New York State Environmental Quality Review Act for application 2117-15 Tuckahoe Avenue subdivision and to direct staff to prepare and circulate the required noticing of this declaration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Have a good summer.
Thank you.
Is that the plan, to be back here in September? Is that the plan to return, get it all wrapped up or continue and be back here in September?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Great. So we'll be back here in September, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more.
One more. The last application is 2249-120 Lake Shore Drive.
You totally faked Rob out. He's like, there's no one here. I wouldn't describe Louis as a no one.
I was halfway to my car.
He was already three quarters in bed. Make it exciting, Louis. All right?
All right, I think we all have to vote, right? We need all of us to say yea, right?
Yeah.
When there's only three.
Good evening. Louis Campana, Architect of Record. 120 Lake Shore, Lake Shore Drive is a lot situated in the R, R12, I believe, R15 zone. It is situated on a corner lot. The existing home is situated on a corner lot, I should say. And on the lot exists, exists a one-story dwelling with a basement which is partially exposed to the rear and side yard. We're proposing to remove the roof, put a second story on the, on the existing footprint, and then expand the front slightly with a new front entrance and then one-story additions. We all, we're also adding a veranda across the front with a stone, a stone wall and some planting that you'll see in a landscape plan. We were at the ARB hearing last month where there was just one comment regarding a railing in the rear of, rear of the house, and we removed piers which were located on the two outside corners of the balcony so that this way that railing matched the other one above. This is the terrace right down, right down below. There were also a recommendation from the ARB to include a landscape plan based on the location of the site being a prominent location on a corner with somewhat of an acute angle. And we were able to get that done for, for this hearing. And what the landscape architect is proposing is a number of plantings along the border of the property to give it a nice, I wouldn't say a barrier, but a soft, a softness around, around that intersection and corner. There'll be a, a number of perennials and also evergreen planting along with existing trees that will be pruned and, and maintained. It was also a recommendation to show a plan with tree protection for all trees that are to be saved. And you can see along the perimeter here, there's a number of, a number of trees, both deciduous and, and evergreen conifer. You can see we have tree protection along the inside of the property there. There are also a few trees that will be removed. There's a tree up here near the, near the wood deck which will be removed. One tree which is in, not, not in great shape, right by the walls that will be constructed. That will be removed as well along with a tree on the back corner. All the other existing trees are to, to remain, and a good portion of them are actually located on the town right of way. The existing driveway will remain. We're going to be also adding some evergreen planting along that border as well. And the rear yard will be cleaned up. There is, the lake actually comes into the rear yard of this house and right now it's just very overgrown, so all that will be cleaned up and exposed to the rear yard. So it'll just flow right down into, into the, into the water.
Good. Can you show us the, the before-after again on the?
Of the house?
Yeah. This is really going to have some height to it, huh?
So the existing, I'm sorry?
It's really going to have some height to it, yeah, compared to.
Yeah, based on how it sits on the lot as well, it does climb up, so yes, it does have some height. The existing house is composed of brick and yellow aluminum siding. So all that obviously will be removed, replaced with, with stucco veneer, an Eiffel stucco veneer. Actually, I should do this.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah.
So Eiffel stucco veneer, a gray standing seam roof. We have white Anderson 400 series windows, white boral trim. Boral is a material that I've been using more frequently. It just holds the, the paint finish much, much better and feels more authentic than PVC. We'll have white K-style aluminum gutters. The railings will be black, black wrought iron with square and rectilinear profiles. We'll have a stone, a field stone veneer on the veranda wall and the piers. And all the light fixtures located around the house will be the DuVoy Square scones from Restoration Hardware.
Good. Looks, looks really nice.
We do have, we do have a drainage, drainage plan as well. The house is basically, well, it's taking the same footprint of the existing, so we're going vertically. And the increased impervious coverage is the, is the veranda, so there's a very minor drainage system being implemented. I believe there's three cul-de-sacs specified by the civil engineer.
What's, what's the current drainage system or drainage situation, I should say? Is there anything?
There must be a dry well.
Okay.
But the rest probably goes into the lake.
Yeah.
You know, the, the property flows naturally down that way. And that's the catchment area for the sheet flow.
All right. I, I don't have any further questions. It looks good.
Do you have the colors? Just kind of curious?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. So it's Parrot stucco. The color will, will be canvas. And the white trim will be super white. Canvas is the one with the arrow.
With white trim?
Yes.
What color is the roof?
Right. It's a gray standing seam.
Gray.
Okay, cool. All right. Very handsome.
Public hearing.
I make, so hang on. I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2249-120 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on same application, 2249-120 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just before we vote, usually there's something we put as a condition about the landscape plan that, you know, it is built per that and someone signs.
Was this, is this, I think, was the landscape plan required on this one or was it?
It was not.
It was not really, was it?
It was not, but we're going the extra mile.
So do we, do we need to make, to put that requirement in if there was not initially a requirement for the landscape plan? So, yeah.
Well, it's part of the application, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair, that's a fair ask.
Fair enough.
So subject to some certification from licensed landscape architect that it's been built per the plans, that's the condition. I'll make a motion to approve this application, 2249-120 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn the June 22nd, 2023 Planning Board meeting. The next meeting will be on September 28th, 2023.
Let's, let's get Louis get up here to vote. He's, he's like Shohei Ohtani. Pitch and back at the same time.
So second.
Voila. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone. Have a nice summer.
Good night.
Have a great summer.
Yep.